Okay, good morning. Sorry about that. We were putting finishing touches on a proposal to save some of the flood control projects that right now are slated not to happen, but that voters voted for. Anyway, it is 10:14 a.m., and I would like to call the September 24th, 2025 special meeting of the Harris County Commissioners Court to Order. We'll now have the prayer. I don't know who has it today. No prayer. Okay, so let's recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which we're speaking, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have seven items on today's agenda, and we will begin with the speakers. So Tiffany, are you ready to call up the speakers?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
And speaking on item two.
Oh, just a moment. Yes, Commissioner Breones.
Good morning, Judge Hidalgo and team. If please, if we could please have Representative John Rosenthal speak first, just out of respect for his schedule, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Hidalgo and commissioners. Thank you so much for acknowledging me this morning. I'm John Rosenthal. I'm the State Representative for District 135, Northwest Harris County. It's a completely unincorporated area, and as always, when I walk into this room, I'm advocating for the constituents that I represent. And because our area is all unincorporated, we rely heavily on county services. So I really am just going to start by saying while the state leadership, the government in this state relentlessly attacks populated counties and cities, Harris County is at the top of that list, and while that's going on, it's going to force you into difficult budget decisions. So I feel for you, I pray for your wisdom, and I hope that that does not continue to happen. I know you all strive to serve our communities, and I'm grateful. My district is, has pieces of, thank you, has pieces of Precinct 3 and 4 in it. I see the good works that you all do with the flood control stuff, new sidewalks all over the place, making our communities safer and healthier, and the programs at the community centers. I office at the weekly center. Thank you, Commissioner Breones, for hosting my office there. So I get to see firsthand how our communities benefit from the services that you all provide, especially the seniors and children who participate in those programs. So I'm here to advocate for keeping those services and infrastructure projects moving. I thank you very much for your time. I know I'm already over. I just am here to advocate, and thank you so much for the work that you do. Good to see you.
Thank you, Representative Rosenthal.
Representative, thank you. It's on my last visit to Austin, I think we switched places, and you were up here and I was out there.
That's true.
It's, thank you for the work you do there. That was very collaborative and constructive and just a point of encouragement. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate you.
Thank you for your service. I know you're making a career change, but thank you for the work you did there, and we look forward to seeing what the next chapter is like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, and no, I'm committed to not, to not having those cuts. Obviously, we didn't, we didn't have to make them. And, and just so you know, there are flood control projects in your district that are right now have no funding, so I'm trying to, and I'll have my, my staff pass the letter to you, but I have a proposed solution so we can restart those projects. Those were projects that the voters approved, but that are not happening because of a deficit in the flood, in the flood bond funding. Thank you so much for, for your work and your advocacy.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for your leadership, Representative Rosenthal. Thank you for what you do for our community and the state of Texas.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge?
Yes, Jay.
I just wanted to make sure, so did you want to take all speakers or do we want to do them by the hearing? If you want to just go ahead and open each of the, each of the hearings and then take the hearing speakers.
Um, sure.
It doesn't really matter either way, except however you want to do it.
Um, I think we might as well just take them, yes.
If you take them, if you know them by areas, we could vote some of these items out.
Um, okay, I'm, uh, I think it would be easier if we just take the speakers, because also people don't know which one they signed up for.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking on items two and three, Will Harris. Speaking on item two, John Nix of Precinct 1, Mary Ann Friedrich of Precinct 4, Carlos Gallo of Precinct 2. You each have one minute.
Good morning, dear council members. You were elected to represent us, the people. People don't take funding from, people don't take funding from the very programs. Please don't take funding from the very programs holding our communities together. These services change lives every single day. Cutting them isn't just numbers on a budget, it's real people losing real help. If we were stronger Harris County, we would have to invest in what's working. Don't turn your back on us now. We elected you.
Thank you. Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
Will Harris.
Thank you.
Elected action for youth.
Good morning, my name is Carlos Gallo. I'm a senior deputy with the Harris County Sheriff's Office. It's been my privilege to serve this community for 26 years. I've always dreamed of retiring as a Harris County deputy and have chosen to stay committed here and rather leave for higher pay elsewhere. That dedication has come with sacrifice. I've missed family gatherings, holidays, and special occasions, not out of choice, but the need to work extra jobs to provide my family with education, housing, and healthcare. Standing beside me is my 18-year-old son Noah, who leaves October 20th to serve the United States Marine Corps. He told me, "Don't worry about me, Dad. You won't have to pay for my education once I leave." His words reflect the financial strain deputies face. Noah hopes to return and serve his community just as I have. With this pay increase, he won't have to look into the children's eyes of his, and here I must leave because of lack of pay parity. I respectfully urge you to see the impact this decision has on families like mine. Thank you.
Thank you both for your service.
Yeah, thank you for, for coming, and Noah, thank you for your, your service to our country, and thank you for looking out for your pop.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, thank you both, and Noah, thank you, and sir, thank you so much for your service. So when do you leave?
October 20th, ma'am.
Oh, wow. Well, I'm, I'm so thrilled for you and, and lucky for us. And, and sir, I want you to know, I absolutely support those raises. I've been advocating for them since 2022. The problem is, we can't fund them without cutting important services. For example, cutting the maintenance of J-Web, which is the system that keeps the entire criminal justice system running. When it collapsed in 2022, you might remember this, 100 and some odd inmates were released from the jail that were not supposed to be released. And so the DA couldn't access their systems, the sheriff couldn't access their systems. We have to cut the inspections that the fire marshal does in unincorporated areas to make sure that the schools are protected from school shooters. So, so this is why my proposal is, let's go to the voters, you know, should have done it this November, let's ask the voters if they want to fund those raises. I really think the voters would say yes, I don't know, but you know, we all support law enforcement. So that's my proposal. Let me ask you another thing. Did you guys flood by any chance during Harvey or have, have neighbors or family who flooded or friends? Okay, and I'll ask some of the speakers if you did, just let us know, because you know, you voted for the $2.5 billion bond, and we are at a $410 million deficit in that bond. So anyway, thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you, Noah. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Judge and commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Mary Ann Friedrich. I'm a member of the Westbury community. I'm very happy there are plans for safe sidewalks and maintaining roads in the new budget. Thanks for making these things a priority. I can attest to the need for sidewalk repair in our area. I'm a senior citizen in good health, and I have experienced stumbling and falling due to dangerous sidewalks in my neighborhood. They are really hard to avoid. Once while walking my dog, I even fell, and my dog didn't take off. She was not, she, she was so stunned by the whole thing. And, I lost my place here. While I'm mentioning it, our streets could stand some TLC as well. I don't think anything major has been done to repair the streets in my neighborhoods since they were built 70 years ago. Repairs are definitely needed to my community as well as many others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, thank you. And so you know, that's not on the cutting block, ma'am, so thank you. One thing that is on the cutting block is firing associate judges. So those are the judges that assist the elected judges and that have been able to cut the backlog in our justice system. So our backlog was so bad that the cases couldn't be processed, and victims and families of victims could not get their day in court. So they were able to reduce the backlog because of these associate judges, but in order to, to be able to fund the raises without going to the voters, the proposal that, that three folks here support fires those associate judges. And that goes against the pleas of the elected judges who came to Commissioners Court requesting that we please not fire those associate judges that they need to be able to keep the justice system going.
Speaking on item two, Christopher Jenkins of Precinct 1, John Nix of Precinct 1, Emre Singh of Precinct 2, Shannon Bowden of, speaking on item two. You each have one minute.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record?
Yes, hi. Hi, my name is John Nix, NICPS in Precinct 1, and I'm several things I want to talk about. I know I only have my one, one minute, but I'd like to have the county put like sensory rooms and like have fidget toys at all of the downtown buildings, like here at 1001 001 Preston and the courthouses and like fidget toys at all the county buildings, like the JP Courts, among other things, for people like myself that are, you know, the ADHD with autism and ADHD to help us with the hustle and bustle of dealing with county business to help it with that and on that topic. And another topic, I would encourage you to reconsider and run again, Judge. We need people like you. If you're on my ballot, I'll definitely vote for you. We need more people like you. So you have my full support. Don't let the cyber bullies destroy you. You have my support.
Thank you.
From one individual, and I got three seconds, so God bless Texas and go team, whatever team you're rooting for. Have a great day.
All right, thank you so much.
And, and hi, Commissioner Alice.
Thank you, and thank, thank you all so much for the, for the round of applause. I, I'm remiss in not, in not saying that only the snapping is allowed, so anyway, but thank you all so much.
Good morning, Commissioners Court. Christopher Jenkins, native resident of Harris County, CLT and TAO direct day feature organization. For some time now, I've been coming here discussing about underutilization of diversion programs, which I'm a bit proponent of. So number one, I had on there for a full discussion about the prioritization of framework with flood district, but number three, Harris Health System needs to update their systems to assess issues with website to make more user friendly, user end-friendly, and a more collaborative relationship with Harris County Public Health. So they need to fix their problems with their programs before they try to expand new buildings. Then I had a concern about number six, HRT and the MAC for the Texas Government Code 551-074. What's going on with the MAC? It has nothing details in the legislative details. Number seven, mental health and the Sheriff's Department, support for more services for mental health is good, but we need to have a better plan, because right now it has been orders requested by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards back in January, the director was killed from having a conversation.
Your time is up.
We need to file you a plan. Pay parity equals liberty disparity.
Thank you, your time is up.
We got our president, he got a bone in his head. What are we going to do?
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Emre Singh, and I'm a six-year deputy with the Harris County Sheriff's Office. I currently serve as a field training officer in District 4. I began my journey in law enforcement when I was 14 years old in the Explorer Program here with the Sheriff's Office. This program showed me that the main pillar of law enforcement is selfless service. In my years on the job, I have seen the sacrifice that deputies take and leave their families in order to work extra jobs for financial stability. Achieving pay parity will allow deputies to spend more time with family, focus on their health, and have the energy to provide better work for the community. The issuance of pay parity has already boosted the morale amongst employees at the Sheriff's Office, and it ensures that Harris County leads the way when it comes to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Emre, good to see you, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your progress. Thank you for all you do.
Good morning, my name is Shannon Bowden. I'm a 35-year veteran at the Harris County Sheriff's Office. Over the past several years, we've lost an untold number of deputies to surrounding agencies simply because they pay better than us. I also serve as a senior pastor in my church, and because of that, many of the deputies feel free to come to me and open up to me. Several deputies and supervisors alike have shared with me how valued they now feel with this step toward pay parity. They've told me it will allow them to spend more time with their families, work fewer extra jobs, and focus their energy in serving the citizens of Harris County instead of searching for a better salary. Your continued support would truly make a difference for the men and women of the Harris County Sheriff's Office and law enforcement abroad and the community that we are honored to serve. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, and I absolutely think that's extremely important. I'm glad they're feeling good about it. And I just want to highlight something else that, that is happening by not taking this to the voters is, is I think we can have both things, right? We can have the law enforcement pay increase, so to not even show we value our deputies. They deserve that amount of pay, just generally speaking, no matter what your perspective is. I think we can both have that and be able to keep our associate judges and be able to keep our justice system running. Actually, when J-Web collapsed, some of the 911 call centers were affected, so we, I don't think any of the deputies would want that. Another thing that is being cut in order to fund the raises without going to the voters is the rainy day fund. So right now, it's as low as it was right after Harvey and right after COVID. And of course, we're in the middle of hurricane season. We know sometimes we have more than one emergency a year, and instead of putting the $10 million we normally put to the rainy day fund, we're not putting it there. So I just want you to know I support this. I'm just asking that we not trade one public safety funding for another one, but instead we do both things.
Shannon, good to see you. Thank you for your work, ma'am.
Speaking on item two, Morris Thomas of Precinct 2, Jason Sarr of Precinct 2, David Powers of Precinct 2, Michael Guerrero of Precinct 2, Becky Edmondson of Precinct 4. You each have one minute.
I'm Deputy Thomas with Harris County Sheriff's Office. Good morning, and thank you, commissioners, for your time. I want to share this raise, share about this raise about life-changing to my family. I am a 13-year veteran with the Harris County Sheriff's Office. I was one of the many officers who applied for Houston Police Department due to their competitive salaries. However, however, with the pay increase the Sheriff Office is scheduled to receive, I withdraw my application, because this, this is the agency where I want to serve and retire from. This raise will also afford me the opportunity to spend more time with my family, as the need to work additional extra jobs will be eliminated. The department itself would benefit as well, because I will be able to come to work refreshed and mentally sound without being weighed down with the stress of extra jobs. Many thanks to whom made this possible. Thank you for your time.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Jason Sauer, 17-year veteran with the Harris County Sheriff's Office. Thank you for the support for law enforcement. Bringing our salaries to a competitive level will help us keep experienced deputies here in Harris County. This isn't just about careers, it's about families. Many of us have had to work extra jobs just to make ends meet. This raise means more time with our loved ones. Law enforcement takes a toll. Long shifts and stress affects our health. This change will reduce sick leave and medical costs, but more importantly, it assures citizens who are served by deputies who are better rested, healthier, and focused on safety. At the end of the day, everybody wins. Thank you.
Jason, any relation to a David Sauer?
No, sir.
All right, well, you, you guys are cut from the same cloth, man. Good to see you.
Good morning, I'm David Powers, Sergeant with Harris County Sheriff's Office. I greatly appreciate your majority vote approving parity of HPDN during the spring. I have supervised for over 11 years. During that time, I've witnessed deputies utterly exhausted, working full-time with HCSO, and another 20 more hours of extra employment just to provide for the basic needs for family and themselves. Their well-being has been stretched very thin and possibly looking to go to other agencies. With your approval of parity, I have already witnessed change. Deputies have, deputies have hope that they can reduce their jobs, hope to spend more time with our families, hope to focus on their health, and results, the results of deputies are arrested, focused, and better able to serve the citizens of Harris County. I'll close with a quote from Sir Richard Branson. Train people well enough so that they can leave, treat them well enough so they don't want to. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Michael Guerrero, and I'm proud to serve with Harris County Law Enforcement. I want to sincerely thank you for the proposed PESCO. For me, it means I won't able, have to work so many extra jobs, and able to spend more time with my family, time that I can't get back. Like many of my fellow deputies, I had been considering leaving HPD because of the pay difference. That was hard, because I love this community, and I want to stay here and serve. This raise gives me a chance to stay where my heart is in Harris County Law Enforcement. Thank you for investing not only in us deputies, but in our families and the future of the community we proudly serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Sir, um, thank you again for your work, and I, and I have been to too many funerals. I think somebody mentioned that. I want you to know that it is possible for you guys to receive your raises, and you could have received them in January without making these cuts. So here's something else that would be cut if we don't go to the voters, is the, the, the district attorney's office would still lose $1.4 million. The elections operations would lose $3.8 million, and then we would have issues as well in terms of pre-trial services. So as you guys know, you know, following up on folks that have been arrested, that we need to keep out of jails, obviously causing more issues to law enforcement. So I just want you all to know that this doesn't have to be on, I don't want to pit communities against each other, or one side of public safety against the other side of public safety. We can have both, and that's why I pled with my colleagues, please ask the voters, so we can have enough funding, so we don't have to cut these things. We are also cutting mental health services in our juvenile justice system, which, as you guys know, has, you know, kids who, yes, were accused or convicted of committing a crime, but you guys, none of us want them to become lifelong criminals, and part of what helps with that are the services, diversion services, like if a kid is arrested for marijuana, it's normally, you know, black and brown kids. If they're, you know, in certain schools, they just get scolded by the parents, and there are in other schools, they get sent to jail. So we used to be able to have a diversion program for them. That program's going to be cut, along with other programs for kids. So I just, I want you to know I'm trying to advocate for having both. I support the raises. I don't support cutting all these things I'm naming, and I, and I don't think you guys would want to cut these things either. Anyway, sorry, go ahead.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for all your hard work on this budget. I know there's so many things to consider. My name is Becky Edmondson, and I am the co-president of the Westbury Super Neighbourhood, representing 5,000 home, single-family homes and 3,500 multifamily. I'm in both Precinct 1 and Precinct 4, so I'm lucky I have two commissioners. As a neighborhood, our number one concern is public safety. The Houston Police Department is critically understaffed, and we've had to rely on Precinct 5 constables to fill that gap for 40 years, and without those officers in my neighborhood, I wouldn't feel safe, and I probably would move. I support a budget that prioritizes protecting the public with more officers, stronger enforcement, and accountability, but that said, for a tax increase, I have a small commercial building, 4,000 square feet, and my tax bill last year was $17,000.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Speaking on item two, Devonte Pope of Precinct 1, Stephanie Valdez of Precinct 2, Polly Looper of Precinct 3, Jessica Leggett of Precinct 2, Eli Rivera of Precinct 2. You each have one minute.
So this chart we just put up here are the recommendations that the budget director has made over the past year or so, and in red are the colleagues that have voted against the recommendations of the budget director. So if they had not voted against the recommendations of the budget director, we would be able to afford the raises without cutting this, without cutting the district attorney's office, without firing judges, things that still have to do with public safety, without keeping fire inspections and emergency inspections from happening in our schools and unincorporated areas. So just know, this, this is happening at a cost that is not necessary. And, and, and remember, we also have a $410 million deficit, so if any of y'all flooded and voted for the flood bond, there are 27 projects that were promised that are not going to happen.
Good morning, my name is Devonte Pope. I'm a mentor for Collective Action for Youth, and I'm also a graduate of Alabama State University with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. A member of the courts, I stand before you today not just as a concerned mentor, but as a voice for the youngest and most vulnerable members of our community. When we talk about budgets, we often talk about numbers, but these numbers are children's lives. Cutting early childhood programs, youth advocacy, and childcare training is just, is not just a fiscal decision, it's a moral one. Every dollar you take away from these programs today will cost us tenfold tomorrow in dropout rates, juvenile justice involvement, and lost potential. The children of these programs are not line items, they are future doctors, engineers, and yes, even the taxpayers who will one day sustain this very county. We find ways to restore funding to other critical service, public health, district attorneys, even park security. I challenge you to show some courage for our kids, because when we choose to balance the budget on the backs of children, we are not saving money, we are spending their future. I urge you to restore these funds, invest in childcare, invest in youth, to prove this county that our priorities begin with those who cannot yet speak themselves.
Thank you, your time is up.
Commissioners, I stand here deeply disappointed by the lack of transparency in this budget process. These decisions will shape whether our community has what it needs in the moments that matter the most. When disasters strike, it is not the police who are the first ones on the ground pulling people from floodwaters or knocking on doors to make sure neighbors are safe. You can police a flood or a hurricane, yet we continue to see budget prioritize law enforcement over disaster response, public health, and long-term resilience. Our community needs investment in flood control, housing, and emergency preparedness, not more resources funneled into policing while residents are left stranded in the bayous. The public deserves to know exactly how their tax dollars are being allocated, and we deserve a process that is open, honest, and equitable. And make no mistake, Commissioner Garcia, when the next disaster comes, people will remember these choices, and as we approach reelection, you, the community, will hold you accountable. We need a budget that truly serves everyone to make all of Harris County more resilient, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record? Ma'am? Yeah.
Stephanie Valdez.
Thank you. There's something else very relevant on this. You guys might remember that my staff members were indicted during my reelection year, as well as the previous public health director. The staff member case was dismissed by General Ken Paxton, the Attorney General, who is a completely opposite ends of the spectrum from me, so obviously, it was, it was all made up, and it went away after I got reelected. This is relevant, because we talk about cost savings and efficiencies. All of these flood bond dollars, and then all the roads and bridges that you guys are talking about, the way those contracts are awarded is literally what my staff members were falsely were falsely accused of, is, um, and this is gonna come out soon, and, and already we have published a report on this, is the members have hand-selected the vendors, not gone through a process of request for proposals, not formed a committee, not have, not had conflict of interest forms. We all passed an item committing to do that, and it wasn't done. So that might have been a way to have some savings. So I appreciate whoever brought up transparency, because, um, like I said, I know there's a reporter working on this, so keep your eyes out, and this was a big thing April of last year. Thank you.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Polly Looper, and I'm a resident and also candidate for State Legislature House 126. Today, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Commissioner Bionis and Commissioner Ramsey for their leadership and commitment to Harris County. Commissioners, you promise to protect safety, strengthen security, and invest in infrastructure, and you've done so while keeping the tax rates steady. This is no small achievement, and it reflects not only fiscal responsibility, but also a true dedication to the people of Harris County. You have shown that progress and accountability can go hand in, hand in hand, and for that, we are deeply grateful. On behalf of our community, thank you for keeping your word, prioritizing safety and security, which personally, working in the Cypress Station area, is imperative to me to be able to go home every night. You're, are ensuring our county continues to grow stronger without placing additional burdens, burdens on families, including mine, and I am proud to serve alongside you and proud to call Northwest Harris County my home, and I hope to bring this to the state of Texas and be able to represent Harris County there. Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for running.
Yes, absolutely.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Leggett. I've served with the Harris County Sheriff's Office for over twenty years, and I'm currently an instructor for the Basic Peace Officer Course at the Training Academy. The proposed rate, um, sorry, the proposed raise is already making a difference. We're seeing stronger applicants come into our program, people who might have gone to other agencies, but now see Harris County as a competitive choice. It will also help us to keep the one-hundred-ten cadets we've spent ten months training instead of losing them to surrounding agencies. Just as important, this raise means deputies will rely less on working extra jobs. That gives them more time with their families, more time to rest, and better morale. And when deputies are rested and supported, the service they provide to our community is stronger. This raise is not just about deputies. It directly benefits the residents of Harris County by ensuring their communities receive the highest standard of service. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Good to see you, Jessica.
Good morning, Court. My name is Sergeant Eli Rivera. I'm with the Harris County Sheriff's Office, currently assigned to our Training Academy, where I oversee our Basic Peace Officer Course. And I can tell you firsthand that the one-hundred-and-ten cadets that we have, they are excited about this pay raise. They've approached me and several of my staff about leaving to other agencies and even providing, uh, wanting letters of recommendation to go to other agencies. So I thank you for pushing this pay raise. As an instructor, they are very excited, and beyond, beyond instructing there at the academy, I also teach at a local university where outside candidates come apply for the Sheriff's Office, and they have heard about our pay raise, and they are excited to step into the Sheriff's Office and have a long-lasting career. I thank you for supporting this pay raise and continue fighting for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
Speaking on item two, Christopher Rivera of Precinct One, Januar Brown of Precinct Three, Zachary Ryan of Precinct Three, Ricardo Garza of Precinct Three, Ty Nguyen of Precinct Three. You each have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Rivera. I work with the Texas Rights Project, and for the last few weeks, we've heard from community members who have implored community, uh, county Commissioners to listen to their needs. They have shared personal stories, discussed how programs outside of law enforcement have helped them, and the hundreds of people who testified all said that they were opposed to increasing law enforcement salaries. Yet, the majority of county Commissioners decided to slash the same programs that community members stood at this podium to advocate for. The community is at a loss, and the necessary services have been reduced annually, while law enforcement funding has continuously grown. We must remember that as we fund more polices and jails, we are simultaneously putting our community at risk and being consumed by the criminal legal system. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Januar Brown. Today, I stand before you not just for myself, but for the voices of our community, families, youth, and neighbors who depend on the decisions that are made and is very wrong. This is the last day of court, but for us is the first day of what happens next. We know budget reflects value. When we invest in prevention, incredible messengers, and opportunities for our young people, we are planting seeds of safety, hope, and progress. Cutting these programs while increasing money, salaries for law enforcement is not balanced, it's a setback. Out of a hundred-and-fifty young people mentored, only two re-offended. That's not just statistics, that's a hundred-and-forty-eight success stories, a hundred-and-forty-eight lives changed, a hundred-and-forty-eight families kept whole. Our community is asking you to protect these programs, to protect our future. Show us that it's court-stan with the people. Let today be remembered not as an ending, but as a moment you chose hope over fear, prevention over punishment, and people over politics.
Thank you. And, and I, I hate that this is like almost pitting two communities against each other because we ha, we can have both, right? And that's what's frustrating. So I, I don't imagine that the folks advocating for the raises are okay with reducing the commitment to the rainy day fund, or with eliminating thirty-three positions, thirty-three law enforcement civilian positions, or, um, with cutting our ability to do air monitoring, like, um, that we built after those massive ITC fires, or to cutting, uh, funding for the Domestic Relations Office, which is, um, the Child Support Division, or to cutting case management for our Community Development Agency, or to reduce electronic and alcohol monitoring, as well as case supervision for pre-trial services, as well as the other, um, parts I mentioned earlier in terms of just keeping the, um, the technology behind our entire justice system running. But there's so much of this that is political, like there was no reason not to go to the voters this year, no reason at all, other than some colleagues being afraid to be associated with asking the voters whether they wanted to see this. And that's what I think is so unfair, is now we're pitting the community against each other for no reason at all. And so part of my thinking is, maybe, maybe we, like, phase it out in a way that we go to the voters next year. It was gonna be phased out anyway. Whatever it is, we realize that we're creating a false problem. We're inventing a deficit and then trying to solve it. Um, we have a hiring freeze as well, so departments, if somebody retires or, um, you know, leaves because they don't have childcare, which they also killed, um, then we can't hire replacement. Um, and that has not happened since the financial crisis in two thousand and eight. So none of this is normal, and I just, I'm just trying to show that, like, we don't, we actually don't need to be, like, fighting over pennies, like, it was possible to have both.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
My name is Zachary Ryan. Commissioner Bionis, Commissioner Ramsey, thank you for demonstrating that it's possible to balance a fiscal, responsible budget with community priorities and lead, leading a transparent budget process that puts voters first. You have proven that we can strengthen public safety, invest in infrastructure, improve health resources, and prepare for disasters while still maintaining a balanced budget. I also want to express my gratitude for addressing pay parity in law enforcement and providing a much-needed pay raise for the deputies in which, which is critical towards a safer Harris County. Thank you for your leadership, your dedication, and your commitment to strengthening our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ricardo Garza. I want to say, and I'll probably be the first one today to probably say this, but, um, Commissioner Bionis, Commissioner Ramsey, and Commissioner Garcia, I've been here several times, uh, the good and the bad, and today I'm here for the good. You guys are doing a good job. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. For those that are saying they don't support you, you have as many in your neighborhood, my family, that also supports you. Okay? And Judge, I believe you're the only one that's pitting everybody against each other. I honestly do. You're the only one that's dividing us, so thank you for not running again. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question. Do you support firing associate judges? Because that's what they're doing.
But you're doing it.
No, I'm not. I'm not voting for that. If this pass, passes, it's gonna be them. I'm not voting for it. Do you support not funding our rainy day fund?
I support everything that's being done in the fact that when my home flooded, you weren't there.
Okay, here's the, let me, let me read out all the flood control projects.
With all due respect, you've met it out so many times. It's okay, I, I, I've, I've read it. I have that paper.
No, this is new.
So, I have it. You issued it out earlier today. I'm not gonna argue with you. This is my opinion. Thank you very much for not running again.
Thank you. And here's, um, here's the, uh...
Carter, thank you for coming down, man. Appreciate your work.
Unlike some folks here, I'm not trying to build an empire and give away contracts so I can have campaign contributions to stay on forever. But, um, let me read the projects that are paused for your neighbors that do flood. F-54 Addicts Reservoir, F-99 Armond Bayou, C-1023 Armond Bayou, F-08 Braze Bayou, F-80 Buffalo Bayou, F-46, F-44, F-41, F-47, F-43, F-69, F-70, All Cedar Bayou, F-112 Cypress Creek, F-98 Galveston Bay, F-17 C-159 Hunting Bayou, F-31, F-30, F-34, F-32 Little Cypress Creek, C-160 F-15 San Jacinto River, F-94, F-93 Sims Bayou, F-119 Spring Creek, F-104 Vince Bayou, uh, C, C-16 White Oak Bayou. These are all, all the ones I read, Precinct Three and Four, Two, One and Two, One and Two, Three and Four, Three and Four, 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 One and Two, One and Three, One, One, Three, Two and One. So even though we have a 410 million dollar deficit and all of these flood control projects that you voted for and that we need are paused, they still created unnecessarily a 200 million dollar deficit. We could have given the raises without that, and instead of figuring out how to fund this. So, look, I know not everybody agrees with me. That's the point of being a politician, and I imagine the gentleman voted against me, and that's democracy, but I at least want to set the record straight. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ty Nguyen. Commissioner Bionis, Commissioner Ramsey, thank you for leading with your vision and the positive impact you continue to make in our community. I greatly appreciate your continued focus on funding core services, especially public safety through common sense solution. The budget process has made it clear that Harris County does not face a revenue problem, but rather a spending problem. By prioritizing essential service first, you have demonstrated a true fiscal responsibility and commitment to protecting our community, and I thank you both each for that. Also, I want to thank you for ensuring pay parity across law enforcement and recognizing the dedication to our deputies and our, and our county law enforcement leaders with a much-needed raise. These actions strengthen public safety across Harris County. We are grateful for your leadership and your unwavering service to the people you represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty.
Speaking on item two, Jose Guerrero of Precinct Three, Amber Driver, Don Hummel of Precinct Three, Cindy Chapman of Precinct Four, Shampa Mukherjee of Precinct Three. You each have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Amber Driver. Commissioner Bionis, Commissioner Ramsey, I want to commend you for your diligence throughout this budget process and for your commitment to transparency while ensuring that our community's priorities were addressed without adding the burden of new taxes. The investments in, in stronger flood control, drainage, safe roads, bridges, and green space will strengthen the long-term safety and resilience of our country, county. I also want to sincerely thank you for ensuring pay parity across law enforcement and for recognizing the dedication of our deputies and sheriff with a much-needed raise. Thank you for leading with, with vision and for the positive impact you continue to make in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Harris County Commissioners, Court. My name is Don Hummel, and I'm with the St. George Place, Ters Number One. I'm here to support the Harris County Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Annual Budget. The Harris County budget is vital to the Ters One capital projects. For example, Harris County provided 2.1 million dollars for the Ters One Schumacher Area Project that leveraged 20 million dollars in public infrastructure improvements. Harris County provided 150,000 dollars for the Ters One Safe School, uh, Sidewalk Project that delivered safe access for hundreds of students that walk to, um, Wisdom High School. And most importantly, Commissioners, passing another's budget today would allow 25 million dollars for the reconstruction of Treviny Rock Road and Anderson Park.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's another thing I, I think folks should know about the budget. There's 65 million dollars in the current budget that are one-time funding, so like a sale of a property, the west, like a West Loop property, right? So we sell it this year, we can't sell it again next year. So even the things that are funded in the budget, next year, they're in the chopping block because those one-time funding items, they can't be done next year. That's why, that's not, that's not how you budget. As a principle, you don't create a budget based on one-time expenses. It's like if you sell your, your dining room table to pay for your budget this year, but you're not gonna have more earnings or fewer expenses next year than you already sold your dining room table. That's what's happening. So, um, just to be clear, is, um, quite the opposite of, uh, forward-thinking, and, uh, and it's also gonna lead to a tax increase eventually because of that situation. We've already cut the services as, as much as we can, like cutting these vital services I've been naming, and then we have these one-time expenses that are patching the budget. So eventually, soon enough, there's gonna be a tax increase in the city of Houston, which is what we followed, what they followed in order to do this, they're already saying there's gonna have to be increases in fees. Um, so don't be fooled.
Yes, thank you. My name is Cindy Chapman. I live in the Westbury Neighbourhood, and I'm a past President of the Westbury Super Neighbourhood. I appreciate being here today, and I want to thank all of you. I know you're having to make difficult decisions, and it's never easy to balance all the many, um, asks there are to make our communities better and safer. I do want to say that in my part of southwest Houston, in my opinion, the two most important county services are for public safety and for flooding reduction. In my neighborhood, we've had hundreds of homes flood, but we also rely on the constable program to supplement the very underfunded and understaffed Houston Police Department. And in my opinion, uh, I know people complain about the constables and say that they don't handle important crime, but if you've been a victim of crime, it doesn't matter whether your car's been broken into or whether you've been assaulted. Either way, it feels like an important crime to you. And so I, I wish you wisdom and blessings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for this opportunity and for all of your hard work. My name is Shampa Mukherjee. I'm a lawyer by trade and a partner at the Mukherjee Law Firm, uh, but more importantly, I'm a mother of three children and a resident of Harris County. My family and I live in the Memorial Area, and while we benefit from a myriad of county services, such as debris cleanup after storms and road and sidewalk maintenance as needed, and we enjoy many parks and trails in our free time, the most important service in my neighborhood is the presence and responsiveness of law enforcement. They show up at our house when we call them because packages have been stolen or because cars have been broken into, um, they provide information whenever neighbors voice a concern, and they especially keep our streets safe and watch out for our children every single day, whether, uh, whether that is because kids are running, playing, or riding their bikes, or because they're keeping an eye on the many teenagers who are learning to drive and becoming newly licensed drivers. As the mother of a seventeen-year-old boy who is relatively recently licensed and a couple of young girls who love going for bike rides, the safety of our streets is my most important priority.
Thank you, your time is up.
And I'm grateful to this honorable court for it being important to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Shampa.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jose Guerrero. Commissioner Bionis, Commissioner Ramsey, thank you for your hard work during this budget process and for being transparent while seeking to prioritize the needs of the voters without raising taxes. We truly appreciate the efforts being made to reduce flood risk, expand mental health resources, and provide the much-needed pay raises for our sheriff and law enforcement deputies. It is refreshing to see both of you focused on building a safer and more resilient Harris County while also being responsible stewards of public fundings. Thank you for your leadership and all that you do for our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking on item two, Glafira Rodriguez of Precinct Two. Speaking on item two, Glafaira Rodriguez of Precinct 2, Nicholas Galen, Luis Lopez of Precinct 3, Andrew Chapman of Precinct 2, Stardrick White of Precinct 1, Jennifer Halverson of Precinct 2, you each have one minute.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Glafaira Rodriguez. I am a taxpayer in the Harris County. I am here to thank you, Ms. Briones and Commissioner Tom Ramsey and Mr. Garcia. Thank you all so much for working so many hours on the budget for this year and not raising my taxes. As it is, I'm struggling already to pay what I pay, right? So, and it is so important for me that you stay strong, don't let others distract you from your good intentions and keeping our families safe by maintaining our law enforcement officers, working in our county, and allowing your officers to go to the Houston Police Department because they're offering more money than we do. Thank you so much. You're not alone. Judge, thank you so much for what you do, but is there any way you can allow Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Ramsey, and Briones to run the budget?
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Yes, they'll vote for it and all those cuts, and I will not. Thank you.
I think they know what they're doing. Let them help you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Commissioner Briones, Commissioner Ramsey, and Commissioner Garcia, uh, for basically taking the time and the hard work in balancing this budget here, which wasn't easy, obviously. Uh, you managed to keep the priorities in place, like roads, bridges, parks, and most importantly, public safety, while also protecting the taxpayers by not raising property taxes. As a resident of Harris County, I truly value the opportunities of my family and I have here, but like many, we already feel the heavy burden of multiple taxes. That's why I deeply appreciate the effort you've made to be responsible with our tax dollars and still deliver the services that matter most. Thank you again for your dedication, your sacrifice, and your continued commitment by putting the citizens of Harris County first, time after time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, just to show you the misinformation that they're giving to, like, and asking you to come to court, they did raise taxes, actually. Uh, the tax rate is up and the amount that you're going to pay is up. Um, my predecessor always used to keep the tax rate the same, but appraisals would make taxes go up. Since I took office, we've actually been cutting the tax rate. Um, this year, we voted to actually up it. Um, so, it's not true that your taxes are not going up, that is false, and I know that you guys were given those talking points when you were asked to come, so that should tell you something about the honesty of some of the folks here, because your taxes are being raised this year. They are. Not just the appraisals, the tax rate.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Chapman. Uh, I've been a, I'm currently assigned as a deputy with Harris County Precinct 4, and I've been a 27-year law enforcement veteran. I wanted to thank specifically Commissioner Briones, Ramsey, and Garcia for your commitment to public safety, your commitment to the communities that you serve, and come here and just say thank you for putting the community first in your decision-making process. I also observed, I'm a Christian, I believe in Jesus, my Bible tells me to pray for our leaders. Since we skipped prayer today, I yield the rest of my time to say prayer over our leaders. Dear Jesus, I lift these leaders up to you, the powers that be are appointed of God. You have them in place for a specific reason, for a specific time, and Lord, watch over them, give them wisdom. Thank you for all they do for our communities. Help everyone here to have their issues addressed, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luis Lopez. I've been a deputy with Harris County Precinct 4. I just wanted to take the time to say, Commissioner Briones, Commissioner Ramsey, Commissioner Garcia, thank you for the hard work that you've done. I don't have any talking points, I just want to say thank you, and I did want to say that yes, us deputies were the ones that were there at the floods. I stayed home away from my children for five days and was not able to see them, so I can be out keeping the streets and helping as much as I could. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Stardrick White. I'm a resident in Precinct 4. I'm against a budget because it takes money away from youth programs and gives it to police raises, and that's a mistake with serious consequence. Youth programs are more than just activities. They're support systems. They help young people stay off the streets, stay in school, and stay connected to their communities. When we defund these programs, we increase the risk of homelessness, incarceration, and untreated health issues, especially for those who end up in jail without proper care. This budget doesn't invest in safety, invest in punishment, and that's not how we, how you build a better future. You can't arrest your way to a better future, but you could build one through your, through youth department. I'm proof that there are youth programs that actually work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, they made it a sport to pretty much cut all the youth programs. I don't know why. I really don't know, especially some of us talk a lot about how we have kids without being mindful of the fact that some people cannot have children, but they seem to enjoy cutting all of the programs, whether it be childcare, whether it be mental health care in our juvenile facilities, whether it be mentorship for kids in gangs to keep them out of the jails. Um, they just thought it'd be fun to cut all the children's programs.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Halverson. In these trying economic times when Austin and Washington DC are passing policies that are designed to undermine the hard-working people of Harris County in the United States, budget cuts can be difficult. Stagnant wages for working people mean that tax increases disproportionately affect lower-wage earners as it takes more of their hard-earned income to pay for housing. It's critical for the government to be funded, but a new tax is not the way. I'm urging everyone to vote to approve the budget today as it meets critical needs without increasing taxes. Belt tightening can be hard to accept, but everyone has done it at one point in time in their life. Depending on grant funding that was never permanent would be like setting your home budget depending on winning the Lotto regularly. If people are concerned about funding streams, working hard to elect good leaders up and down the ballot that will fight for better programs and will not cut critical funding at all levels of government would be the best way to ensure all citizens are treated with respect and dignity.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Um, there, I think we have one more speaker, Flor Zachosa. If she is here, Flor, are you here? There you go. We could add her to the speakers list.
Flor, you can come down. Also, Stacy Fairchild, Nishreen Panawula, Tanya Ingram, Eleanor Hildreth, and Aleha Newman. You each have one minute.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. So, I stand before you, I don't usually write anything down, so, uh, to me, uh, this is very important to me. I stand before you today and support the men and women who put on the uniform each day to protect our communities. A law enforcement officer are more than public servants. They're the first to respond when we're in crisis. Every day, these officers make sacrifices most of us will never be asked to make. They work long hours, face unpredictable dangers, and carry the heavy responsibility of protecting lives. Yet too often, their pay does not reflect the weight of that responsibility. It's true what they say. Until it happens to you, then you will understand what these officers go through. Fair pay ensures what we can retain experience, that we can retain experienced officers who carry with them years of training and wisdom that cannot be replaced overnight.
Flor, if you'd like to wrap up.
It shows that as a community, we value their service enough to back it with action, not just words. When we undertake law enforcement, it does not affect only officers, it affects every citizen who depends on quick and effective, reliable public safety. An investment in our officers is an investment in the safety and stability of our neighborhoods. We ask them to give us their best, so there's only right that we, in turn, give them the support they need.
I personally want to thank all first responders, especially law enforcement, that they showed up in a time of crisis. On behalf of my husband, my late husband, and myself, thank you to all law enforcement that are here to put their life on the line every day, every moment, every day that they set foot outside their homes. Speaking of floods, I heard you say, and I heard people say, yes, it is law enforcement that show up first. Harvey, I packed my husband's lunch. He carried his backpack, he put his boots in his backpack. I saw him roll up his pants, walk through that water to the end of the street so he can get picked up by another deputy to go and work. So, I hope and pray that you guys make the right decision for our law enforcement and all first responders. I thank you for your time, and thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, Flor will not say this, but she is the widow of Deputy Darren Amendaris, so let's give her and her family a round of applause and gratitude. And Flor, I want you to know, and you can go back to the tape, I did not say that deputies don't show up to floods. I just, I said that there are flood control projects that are now not being funded, but I promise you, I know that.
I respect that, and I can go on and on and talk about every subject that you have back there. I'm a community member, I serve on the board, on a board at East Dali, so I know the decision-making can be hard sometimes. But we have to do this for our people, for the community, and I hope and pray that you guys make the proper decisions for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for your continued service.
Thank you, Flor.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nishreen Punawala. I manage Alzheimer's homes, so I'm here to speak to a cause that's very dear to my heart, um, mental health, and I wanted to personally thank all of you for the past couple of years for pushing through with the mental health awareness and the Heart Initiative. Um, I mentioned last time, we personally have had to help families bail their loved ones out of jail because the mental health crisis wasn't responded to in a correct manner. So, I'm extremely grateful that we now have trained clinicians who can intervene and respond versus people ending up in jail for something that could be handled differently. And that's all I wanted to say. So, thank you very much, and I hope we continue this, and this is not one of the things that gets compromised in the next budget.
My name is Eleanor Hildreth, and I'm asking you to retain funding for air quality monitor, monitoring. As fossil fuels decline, air quality should get better. If you continue to measure air quality, then you can brag about it improving, but if you don't measure it, you won't know if it got any better. Clean tech, which is solar, wind, and all that, is cheaper and cleaner, and solar is doubling globally every three years. Since about 2012, oil and gas industry capital expenditures have fallen almost by half, according to Rocky Mountain Institute's report, "The Clean Tech Revolution." The Houston Chronicle reports that fossil fuel companies are laying off workers. The Greater Houston Partnership's latest monthly report-
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm afraid you're out of time. Thank you. I wish we could give more. We have a lot of speakers. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Ingram, and I am a resident of Precinct 3 under Tom Ramsey. Commissioner, I'd like to thank you for working across party lines to get this budget done. I am a Democrat, and I am proud to live in your district. I am here today because I was triggered by something that the county judge said at the last Commissioners' Court. She said that she could not afford to buy a house. Well, I am a homeowner, I pay taxes, and I paid $28,000 in property taxes last year. I am not rich. I cannot afford to give you another cent, not under this economy. So, I thank all of the Commissioners that worked so hard to get this budget, thinking of constituents first, and I realize that some of the services that are being cut are important. However, my household, we're not rich people, and we cannot afford another half a cent being asked of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I just want to be transparent, you are being asked to pay more. Your taxes are increasing, and I know they are too high, and really the issue is that the state used to give this much to education, and then they started giving this much, and then they upped it a little bit, so the school districts charge an enormous amount of property taxes, and that's why everybody's bills have gone up. Um, on the air monitoring, I wanted to just respond to that. If you guys remember ITC or those big explosions we've had, the firefighters are there, we also have law enforcement putting their lives at risk, trying to put those fires out, keeping people safe. We purchased, after the ITC fire in 2019, the ability to do air monitoring, uh, to figure out exactly what's in the air to protect not just the community, but the firefighters and the police officers. We are not going to be able to have that equipment anymore, okay? That's part of what's being cut. So, I understand folks came in here with, like, raises, but just realize that a lot of public safety and law enforcement is being cut. And this did not need to happen, it's not like, here's the expenses and here's the costs, balance the budget, work together. Like, it was created out of nothing, this problem was created, um, because we could have asked people what they wanted to see. So, actually, the negotiation should be, how can we stagger this, go to the voters, do both things, as opposed to cutting things or telling people that we're not cutting law enforcement, we are, telling people we're not raising taxes when we are, telling people that balancing the budget is some big achievement when we're required by law to do it. Um, it's, anyway, I'm just frustrated on behalf of the community. Yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Stacy Fairchild. I reside in Precinct 4, Harris County Precinct 4, and I also represent the Washington Corridor, uh, which is represented by Harris County Precinct 1 and 4. So, I'm, I want to start my comments out with saying nobody guided me with what I'm about to say, so I don't know where that comes from, but for the record, uh, these are my comments. I just want to congratulate you all on balancing, uh, next year's budget while protecting core public services without raising our taxes. We're very appreciative of that. You've proven that hard work pays off, and the people of Harris County are better for it, and I especially thank you for investing in pay parity for law enforcement. It's pretty clear here today from the audience and the speakers that public safety and infrastructure are the most important, or the focus, the focus of the speakers here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, your time is up.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Ramos, what percentage is the tax rate going up this year?
If you give me a second, I can get the exact number.
But it is going up, right? So, I'm not making it up, y'all, like, we are raising tax, they are raising taxes. And, um, just remember, all of these infrastructure projects that people voted for are right now at a $410 million deficit, so your infrastructure is being impacted, and the county infrastructure is not being, including our schools, and this building and the courts are not, no longer going to be able to be inspected properly or maintained properly.
Um, hello. Um, I wrote a lot of stuff, I don't feel like reading all of this, I'm tired. I just wrote like five hours to come here. Um, my name is Ania. I reside in Precinct 4. Um, I feel like, well, not I feel like, but it's a lot going on with this budget thing, um, and I don't like that y'all trying to take away from the youth, like, providing for the youth organizations and stuff, because that's the reason I'm here. Last time I was here, this is my second time coming, I'm proud of myself, but last time I was here, I heard my judge, Ms. Melinda Moore, speak, and she was, she's a part of the reason, like, I've grown and changed. Like, a year and a half ago, two years ago, I was an escort and a dancer and doing a lot of stuff. Now, I'm in barber school, and I'm doing good, and I'm living good, and it's because of the youth programs, and it's because of the good judge and stuff that I have. So, I feel like that's something y'all should be considerate about, because when you pour into the underserved and you give people a chance, people actually take that chance and make something out of it. It's a lot of people who have all them stories, but yeah, that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Ma'am, can you please state your full name for the record?
My name is Ania Muker.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to say that if other departments can go without, so can the sheriffs and the constables. We're not saying that they don't deserve raises and shouldn't be able to afford to live, but you're not doing that across all departments. I'm here again to point out that what, what we've been doing hasn't been working. As people have expressed, that we need to invest in our youth and invest in our communities, and that's where the money should go. It's good to see all my people here. We're in coalition. We turn people out to vote. We get them registered to vote, and we tell them about your choices. We will replace you. We're not, I'm not saying this is a threat or to be disrespectful, but a lot of us are willing to run for office, and a lot of us are willing to support those who are wanting to run for office. I think that you need to reconsider where you're putting this money, and listen to us. And there's one person who said that people are here talking about law enforcement and wanting that. Speak for yourself, and I will say that I'm not in agreement with that.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Elijah Newman, and I live in Precinct One.
Thank you. Thank you.
Speaking on Item Two, Emmanuel Nunez, McKinley Sharon Phant, Diamond Calhoun of Precinct Two, Benjamin Broadway of Precinct One, Sabrina Bowens of Precinct One. You each have one minute.
Did you find, Director Ramos, what percentage the tax rate is going up by?
My staff is calculating it. Just one piece of nuance. The, the general fund and the port went down, but because of the, of how the hospital districts is calculated, that's what caused the overage.
Right. I mean, the total is up. That's the point. Like, when you, when people look at whether their taxes went up or down, they don't split by thing. Like, I get it that you are at the mercy of three, but like, let's not mischaracterize things. Yeah.
Yeah. Hospital district caused it to go up, to be clear. Right? Thank you.
Right. Whatever caused it to go up, like, it's up. Taxes are not lower. They, your taxes are up.
It's going up about three and a half percent.
There you go. So your taxes are being raised three and a half, your tax rate is being raised three and a half percent because of whatever it was. I mean, most of it is because, yes, because of hospital district, but actually because of the school district. So we can talk about that, because of the state, because of the voters that elected those leaders on the state. I mean, we can go because of their parents who birthed them. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Today I testify to some truths and a lie. Truth: This court voted 3-2 to pass Constable Pay, and the public didn't have the opportunity to vote on it. Truth: Judge Eldago and Commissioner Ellis voted no because the math bended our budget towards a deficit. Truth: To support the Constable salary raise, the court will take from ARPA gutting relief, medical aid, cash assistance, grassroots efforts. Truth: When asked why, the reason for this immediate raise is to stop foreseeable mass exodus of constables who will resign. So logical solution is to give them $170 million to prevent the exodus, but that is a lie. No proof, no data, no polling, no plan, fear mongering dressed up like facts, marching us towards a $200 million hole. If the exodus is real, promote the faithful, hire the willing, like you have done in the past. Assembly, press, remember this budget crisis was built on a lie, and when cages fill, taxes are raised, and public services go quieter, the facts, remember them, vote accordingly.
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
Ken Sharon Phant with Collective Action for You. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Nunez, and I'm just here to speak about, that I'm really happy about the county's, you know, continued collaboration with the city to be able to bring infrastructure projects forward. I, you know, I commend much, much of the county for picking up the slack and building sidewalks all across the different parts of the county, and defending against the state's attack to take the toll road authorities' funding away. And, you know, I'm just really happy to see the county being more and more involved inside the inner city, because, you know, so many of us that live in the city pay for taxes to the county, and just really happy with the, with the way that the county's starting to, you know, build a lot more inside the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Deputy Diamond Calhoun. I want to thank this court for making the decision to invest in us. For me, the raise is more than just numbers on a paycheck. It means I don't have to stretch myself thin, working extra jobs, and I can finally spend more time with my son. It also means I don't have to think about leaving for HPD just because they pay more. I'm a new deputy with the county, and this raise makes it easier for me to spend my career here. I can stay here in Harris County, serving the community I care about. This court's decision tells us that we matter, that our kids matter, and that the sacrifices we make every day are seen and valued. Thank you for believing in us.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you for your work.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Sabrina Bowens, and I'm a mentee with the Credible Messengers Program. If you really want Houston to thrive, programs like this are how you create safety, not just enforce it. Growing up, I've seen the effects that lack of resources has done for my family and community. Youth is a season where you are most easily influenced and shaped by the environment around you. When you don't have access to what you need, you seek different routes which leads to crime. Historically, underserved communities have had the same access, haven't had the same access, resources, to resources like education and professional connections. That's why mentorship is so critical. It closes those gaps. Law enforcement keeps communities in order, but mentorship actually changes lives at the root. We're learning how to succeed in school, build character, and stay in the right path. That means fewer crimes who are arrested and stronger neighborhoods overall. If our budget stays low, we can't reach as many young people who need this, but if we're funded fairly, we can actually break cycles of poverty, crime, and lack of opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, County Commissioners. We need to work together to try and make this work. Ma'am, I'm all for the constables getting their raises, but can't we do it over a five-year plan to where all of our services don't pay the price? Back in '22, Ramsey, you could have made this better. Man Garcia, Breones, y'all were here. Now, I was sitting right over there to the left. They didn't show. So all these officers that are up here praising them now, where were they at then? Back in 2022, when their families had to go without, my family members had to go without because they worked for HPD, because they worked for the sheriff's office and for the department. So what about that, Ramsey?
Thank you. And what the gentleman is referring to is, in 2022, we tried to bring these raises. I tried, but of course, because I was on the ballot, my gentleman here and another gentleman did not show, and they kept these raises from happening. And then we could have afforded it without all of this and without going to the voters. So it's just a lot of pulling wool over eyes. Somebody was talking about, and I hope that my colleagues will work with me and collaborate with me, so we do not have to cut all of this. We were talking about children earlier. Somebody mentioned children and families. We have validated, evaluated, longstanding childcare programs that all of the offices put together over the course of years, and colleagues refused to ask the voters whether they wanted to continue them because they were quote, "half-baked." And you see the budget, it's half-baked really, really. Like, we haven't had a budget this bad, I don't know since when. Like, it's not normal to have a $200 deficit. It's not normal to have a hiring freeze. You only do that during a recession or a depression, which we're not in right now. So it is, it is not responsible for families. It is not fiscally responsible. It is not transparent, and it is more than half-baked. So if we're gonna not support children, babies, because it's not half-baked, then how about we bake this one and think about it before we pass it? Let's figure out how to not cut all these things and how to not pit communities against each other.
Up next, speaking virtually on Item Two, is Doug Peterson of Precinct Two. You have one minute. Go ahead, please.
Yes. Thank you all for the important work you're doing today. My name is Doug Peterson. I'm a Natsa retiree, Exploration Green co-founder, and community activist. We live in difficult economic uncertainties. We face tariffs, economic stress, looming shutdowns from Washington that all certainly hurt Harris County residents. Property tax increases hit everybody ultimately. Under the state law, property taxes are equally applied, which translated means it hurts those with the lowest income and little wealth, including retirees, or rather renters, as increasing rents inevitably take more of family budgets. Our governments need adequate funds, for sure, but now is not the time. Now is not the time to certainly, to increase taxes. This budget meets critical needs, including public safety and public health, and does it without intacts. Please, Court, approve this budget.
Sir, this budget raises tax, the tax rate by over 3%. So I want you to know, they're voting, they are raising your taxes.
Thank you, Doug.
Speaking on Item Two, Isan Baja of Precinct One, Tia Richardson of Precinct One, Lenita Robinson of Precinct Three, Joy Davis of Precinct Two, Latricia Lewis of Precinct One. You each have one minute.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. My name is Isan Baja, and I'm a constituent of Precinct One and a member of the Pure Justice Action Fund. I strongly encourage you to vote no on this budget. This is not a budget for the people. This is a budget for law enforcement paid for with our tax dollars. Other departments should receive this kind of funding, but they don't. I have attended and spoken at multiple Commissioners Court meetings, and I have been noticing a shift, a shift away from helping and prioritizing people to incentivizing the police to keep them from leaving. We did not vote for that. I know I didn't. Vote no on this budget. County Judge Lena Hidalgo, thank you for your advocacy and for always fighting for our babies. Thank you Commissioner Ellis, for always fighting for equity. Thank you.
Thank you. And I may not have babies, but I do believe that children deserve to be fought for. Of course, they don't endorse and they don't vote.
My name is Tia Richardson. I'm speaking on behalf of Pure Justice, and I'm here to talk about voting no on the law enforcement due to the fact that it is so many youth that is going out, is out here that are struggling, and it's an extension from the adults that are struggling. Because how can we even teach them or show them if we're not even getting things provided for us? And y'all are talking about putting more money into law enforcement, and also talking about it's a hiring freeze where we're not even able to make the amount of money to even survive. I see so many panhandlers out here that's out, that's, that's young, that's needing housing, all of that. And me personally, I live with HIV undetectably. So with all that being said, I have to make sure that I have my stuff too. So with all the funding, no. I, I vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. The federal government, since President Bush, has been funding HIV programs, which, as you know, this, this grows, affects all kinds of people. They are stopping that funding. So of course, as we're at a deficit, and a worse and worse deficit, we will not be able to step in and tackle that in the future. So I, I just want you to be aware of that.
Vote no on this budget, or vote yes and get more taxes. So my name is Joy Davis. I'm the Senior Field Organizer with Pure Justice Action Fund. I'm here speaking on behalf of people across our neighborhoods who are unseen, unheard, and undervalued in the halls of power as you consider adopting this budget. There are over 500,000 people living below the federal poverty guidelines here in Harris County, and you're telling me that childcare, housing, and healthcare isn't funded with the same enthusiasm as law enforcement? As part of balancing the books, your proposal included hiring freezes for many vacancies. The OCA budget was cut from $24,697,705 to $12,825,009. At the same time, you want to expand pay raises for law enforcement, a politically sensitive decision with fiscal consequences. These are not trade-offs. The programs we have been advocating for are various, are the various services that help stabilize people in crisis. Why put Harris County into this dilemma? It's not worth it. I want to leave you with this. Our neighborhoods, our children, our elders, the people with disabilities, they can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are some indefensible pay raises as well. 62% raise to the elected constables, ostensibly because their staff members earn more than they do. Our staff, staff members earn more than we do. There was also 120% pay increase to the toll road director. So when you pay tolls, that money gets split in four, goes to the offices, and that's the money that they use to pay for those sidewalks, et cetera. But those are the contracts that don't go through requests for proposals or conflict of interest forms. Those are contracts that actually do what my staff members were accused of doing. So all of this real odd financial behavior, it just shows you how we're bringing politics into the budget, which is the last place we need politics.
Thank you. Thank you for your transparency. Thank you for your transparency.
Good morning. My name is Latricia Lewis, and I just have a couple of questions for y'all. What future do you, do y'all see for our county? What future do you see for family and, for families and children that won't, that'll go without after-school programs and community centers? What future do we, do you guys have, what future do you see for inmates that will go without their medication and mental health services? And all of this for, to satisfy a $170 million Constable raise? I ask because these are questions that are important, because if the Constable get the raises, the raise that they want, so many families go without. I need to know what plans you, you have to support the families that will go without. Without a plan, we just have piss-poor performance. The, the, I'm gonna just stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, I brought my soon-to-be 18-year-old son, who will be voting for the first time in this upcoming election. I wanted him here to hear what this community is saying, and to also hear your responses. I've taught him not to let Harris County's numbers define him, that although black residents are less than 20% of the population, we are nearly 50% of the jail population. He is a 4.024 GPA student, a National Honor Society member, an esports business owner, and a digital cartoonist with over half a million likes on TikTok. Yet, I must prepare him for the reality that budgets like this one send a message. He is more likely to be seen as a criminal than a young leader. Most residents are already working multiple jobs away from their families without health insurance, pensions, childcare, or safe living spaces. And now this budget asks them to sacrifice more, while policing and justice already consumes nearly 50% of the county's resources.
Thank you ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Come in Ms. Robinson. Good to see you. Congratulations to your, your good work, young man.
That's what's up.
Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Lenita Robinson, Cayman Ray Daniels, and I am with Pure Justice. Thank you Rodney Ellis, and thank you Lena Hidalgo for your services and for educating the public, and us, so that we can know what's really going on and communicate with our community members outside this, this Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning statistics. I've been mentioning various points here, and I know my colleagues have been quiet. Some may think, well, how do we know what she's saying is true? I invite them to challenge me, and I'm, I'll respond. Everything's been thoroughly documented.
Yes ma'am.
And just for everybody, this is the map of the 27 flood control projects that are currently not gonna move forward because of an existing deficit. So we were already facing a deficit here, and then colleagues created a new deficit and decided not to, not to continue early childhood, and, and decided to fund law enforcement raises while also cutting judges and civilian employees and school inspections and other law enforcement pieces.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think you'll be on TikTok this afternoon, so you better pull it up.
Yeah, what, what's your handle, sir?
Let me get in the mic. It's ProfNudeX5, P-R-O-F-N-O-O-D-X5.
P-R-O-F.
N-O-O-D.
N-O-O-D.
X5.
X5, okay. I, I don't have TikTok. I can't, like, I can't put it away if I open it, but I will pass it along. X5, okay. I, I don't have TikTok. I can't, like, I can't put it away if I open it, but I will pass it along. Thank you.
Speaking on item two, Jalen Sewell of Precinct One, Danny Ramos of Precinct One, Courtney Revels of Precinct One, Consuelo Rico of Precinct Three, Jackie Tucker of Precinct Three. You each have one minute.
Good morning. I'm Jalen Sawell. Us giving money to the police isn't really solving anything. We already like be growing up and be facing obstacles. With me, I have a friend that wrote a statement. Honorable Court Judge and Commissioners, I want to raise a serious concern regarding the decision on constable pay raise. During public testimonies, the judge repeatedly left the bench refusing to hear citizens who came to speak. This behavior violates the Texas Open Meanings Act, which requires public meetings to be open and accessible and, and ensure citizens the right to address government officials. Additionally, this denies the public First Amendment's right to petition the government and undermine due process and equal protection under the Fourteenth Amendment. As important testimonies was ignored, decisions made under these circum- circumstances are unfair and legally vulnerable. I ask that the Commissioners fully consider all public input.
Thank you, your time is up.
And transparency, thank you.
Sir, who did you say left the dais during public comment? I didn't quite catch it.
Tom S. Ramsey, and I'm also a 22-year-old that was devastated from Hurricane Harvey. I'm also a 22-year-old who was walking down the street from Little Caesars, coming home from work, and I got victimized saying that I was fit the description of someone that was breaking an entry, breaking in vehicles. I honestly don't. They can get the money. We just gonna have to figure out another plan.
Thank you.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. My name is Connie Rico, and I'm a resident of Harris County. I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you for supporting law enforcement. Thank you for showing your excellent service towards Harris County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Danny Ramos. I just want to come up here and personally thank Commissioner Breones, Commissioner Ramsey, Commissioner Garcia, thank you for your continued support in public safety and law enforcement.
Good deal. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Courtney Revels. I reside in Precinct One. I grew up in Precinct Two, the North Shore area. And for those of us in the community that are actually following the county and the city budget process, it's unfair that elected officials would, would propose a half-baked police raise over essential services. I agree with the dude. We have no problem with like police. I have a cousin who's a constable, like I know sheriffs, they're some of my favorite people. But we have to propose a budget that makes sense. Y'all didn't approve of Lena bringing those kids out here, but those are the exact people that will have the consequence of fixing this 10 years down the way. So for the city to put us in a deficit, the county to put us in a deficit, and have us out here arguing with the police, it's absolutely detestable. Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, police. It is not y'all against us. It's us in doing what's right.
Thank you. Couldn't have said it better.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Jackie Tucker, and I proudly lead the Wise Women Group at Glazier Senior Education Center. As a Harris County resident, I'm grateful to see the Commissioner, Commissioners' Court making the budget process more transparent and inclusive. Our group has met at Glazier for over five years, and it's become a vital space for seniors to connect, learn, and support one another. We truly value it. I respectfully urge you to pass a balanced bus, budget that protects essential services without asking hardworking residents to pay more. Thank you for your service and for listening to your community.
Thank you.
Speaking on item two, Laura Gallier of Precinct One, Jorge Gonzalez of, Arian Whittle of Precinct Four, Dominique Carter of Precinct One, Monica Vasquez of Precinct One, Darlene McKeever of Precinct Three. You each have one minute.
My name is Laura Gallier, Precinct One with Pure Justice Action Fund. Air and water quality impact the health of every resident of Harris County. While individuals can impact the community in some ways, only government can investigate and enforce environmental regulations. The Department of Pollution Control must be adequately funded. My grandchildren with asthma are at your mercy. Watching them struggle to breathe while playing outside is terrifying. Also terrifying is a possible serial killer, leaving residents in bios. Fully fund forensic sciences to find this murderer and prevent future murders. Thank you Commissioner Ellis for prioritizing true community safety and equity.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Monica Vasquez, and I'm proud to serve on the Board of the TERES 12 Redevelopment Authority, where I was nominated by Vice Mayor Pro Tem Amy Peck and Mayor John Whitmire, and confirmed by Houston City Council. I'd like to personally express my gratitude to the Court for including TERES 12 projects in the proposed fiscal year 26 budget. The county's collaboration and partnership with TERES 12 reflects a forward-thinking approach to infrastructure investment in a historically underserved area in our community. These projects directly impact public safety, mobility, and quality of life for the residents, their families, and businesses we serve in northwest Houston in Harris County. Thank you again for your leadership, support, and for helping us make real progress in TERES 12. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge Hidalgo and Commissioners. My name is Jorge Gonzalez, and I come today not only as a Director for the Town Hall Center, but also as a advocate for the communities that we serve. Just a few weeks ago, our President and CEO, Dr. Adriana Temez, came before you and talked to you about the, how we value each of the partnership that we have with each of you Commissioners and Judge. And today, we want to highlight one example. Our collaboration with Commissioner Breones at Precinct Four through La Tendita at Baylen Park. La Tendita is a trusted hub where families find consistent access to healthy food, essential resources, and connections that help, help them get back on their feet. Thanks to the precinct's investment and partnership with the Houston Food Bank, American Heart Association, we are serving hundreds of families every week in a central accessible area. This is what happens when public, nonprofit, and community partners align. Resources, food insecurity is reduced, children and seniors are supported.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. Arian Whittle is my name, and this budget is more than numbers. It's a reflection of your leadership priorities. To what extent do the values and urgent needs of our community require increased funding for those entrusted with our protection? We need to ensure that every dollar serves the public good. Our community's unmet needs extend beyond policing. Families are asking for stronger investments in affordable housing, healthcare access, mental health support, quality education, and infrastructure that makes daily life safer and more sustainable. A balanced budget must reflect not only safety in terms of law, but also safety in terms of stable homes, healthy neighborhoods, and opportunity for all. I urge you to ensure that these things are not overshadowed, but prioritized alongside enforcement. Above all, we ask for transparency, accountability, and a firm commitment to fiscal responsibility so that every dollar is spent wisely and equitably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Darlene McKeever. I live in Precinct Three, but I'm immediately adjacent to Terry Hershey Park and Precinct Four. I love Terry Hershey Park. I understand like everyone speaking that balancing the budget and working through this is difficult, but I do encourage the Commissioners to maintain public healthcare as a priority, particularly as it relates to children. Mobile health and dental services, immunizations, and mental health care access are critical for children and the youth of our Harris County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Dominique Carter with Incredible Messengers for Collective Action for Youth, and it's a very amazing program. This budget stuff, I don't really know what's going on with it, but I know that I hear floods, that's good. The police getting money, that's not that bad. But it's a lot of police that do what they want to do, just like, just do whatever. They just see you in a car, think you look like somebody, pull you over, and you just gotta stop because they're a police officer. But I feel we the same. We don't have to just, if you don't want to, but you have to because they're a police officer. Other than that, this program, I'm a boxer. I'm in barber school. I just built the mini bike, you know. This program is amazing. It can really help people. And when I do tell other people about it, their eyes light up like, hey, life been saved, like, oh, thank you so much for this. So this program, it really changed their lives. If y'all could keep the budget for it, that'd be great.
Can you tell us a little bit more about what the program does?
The, um, the program, okay, this is how I got, I just start off, you just, my brother, he came out of prison, he got in the program. He said, get in the program. I got into it, and he sent me a number. They tell you, get on there, tell them your circumstances of how you're living right now, and they work with you from there. So then you get a mentor. They give you a mentor, and then they just be like, what you want to do? You can be like, I want to drive trucks, or I want to do the, do the, they open up their resources, like, oh, I got a friend here, a friend here, da, da, da. And it's free for you because the main goal is like, dang, how much I have to pay for the, or how much I have to, don't worry about it, just go, just, if you can go, so.
And sort of what, what kinds of folks end up being enrolled in the program? And, and what do you think they would do otherwise?
From 10 to 35 is the range. Other than like, people don't know what they want to do. Like, they just sitting around getting drunk, high, just sitting around. They don't know what they want to do. But when they have somebody right there on side, you're like, hey, what you want to do? Hey, you think you can, hey, you wanna, I got a financial literacy class for you. I got a mental health circle. Oh, you going through this? You want to kill yourself? I got, so.
So these are the young people and, and mostly men that end up, end up filling our jails, costing, you know, between $100 and $300 a day to taxpayers. Talk about saving on taxes. So I don't think any of the, the Democrats on this court, certainly the ones that are up for reelection, I don't think they ran on killing these kinds of programs. I don't think they ran on killing not just the early childhood proposal, but also a number of programs for children. I don't think they ran on defunding the payment for judges that we need in ju- justice system. I don't think they ran on defunding the Fire Marshal's Office so that they can't no longer do safety inspections in schools. I don't think they ran on creating a deficit so that they could then try to solve it and actually not solve it because there's one-time funding and there's a hiring freeze. So when they make promises to run again, just know. They've already shown that what they put on that walk card ain't what they're gonna do.
Speaking on item two, Heather Stottmeister of Precinct Four, Willie Harris of Precinct One, Chevis Mitchell of Precinct One, Jennifer Vasquez of Precinct Two, Edward Eagleheart of, no precinct. You each have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Heather Stottmeister. I'm the Executive Director of Family Ties Family Resource Services in Precinct Four. We cover all the way across from Katy, all the way across to Tomball and through Wa- the city of Waller that is Harris County, all the way back around to Cypress, not because we want to, but because there's not a lot of services there. I first want to thank Commissioner Breones for having her town halls. I think that makes things so clear for us and it keeps us in the loop. I want to thank the Commissioners for pulling a budget together. I, I can only imagine how difficult that must be. And I thank you for staying and making it work even when it's hard. I want to thank you for the DVAF, spearheading the DVAF funding and supporting that for families who are victims of domestic violence as well as the early childhood. Because of that, we had a kiddo return to regular school this week who was in, labeled as AED. Unfortunately, sometimes children that go through trauma are labeled with CD, and they get placed in those situations.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Oh, I, I apologize. I thought Commissioner Bre- I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia told me.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us in the budget.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners Court. My name is Willie Harris. I'm the Youth Justice Director for Collective Action for Youth. I want to start by thanking you Judge Hidalgo and you Commissioner Ellis for your commitment to public safety. Others, a rather obscured vision, but a vision nonetheless. The importance of hearing from community members of impacted community goes without saying. Understanding the reason you have to budget for other nonessential programs is because we won't invest in equitable opportunities for impacted communities. Everything is connected. Again, how this budget gets passed is through a thoughtful discussion and consideration of what removing vital community services would do to struggling communities. The jail population is largely made up of individuals from impacted communities, further explaining how appropriate resources need to be diverted to those communities. For all of the math majors in the room, that's one plus one, which almost all the time equals two. Why are we subtracting? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chevis Mitchell. I'm a proud citizen of Harris County, and I just want to thank Commissioner Breones, Ramsey, and Garcia for your support for our law enforcement and public safety, and also for helping to build better families and better deputies. And let's be clear, our officers, they have been underpaid for years. So how much longer do they go with that?
That's right. Thank you.
That's right, sir, and that's why I proposed a pay raise in 2022, but because of some colleagues here, it couldn't pass. Let's take these two speakers, and then I'll call up the sheriff. I know he just walked in. And if there are other elected officials I'm not seeing, please, colleagues, let me know. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Lucina Jennifer Vasquez. I am a proud owner of a family-owned restaurant called Taqueria Monchis. We provide authentic Mexican food to the community of Houston. And you see, as a business owner, we wear several hats. We, we are taking orders, we are charging, we are delivering food. And I also have, I'm lucky to have a accountant, and we always talk about how to cut down cost of goods sold, but how? If back in February and March, eggs raised 100%, tomatoes, avocado keep inflating, not to mention the massive deportation, 90% of clientele are Hispanic. We lost 30% of our daily sales. As a business owner and taxpayer, we live in a time of economic, economic uncertainty. Small businesses are feeling the impact of tariff and inflation. It is important that county government be funded, but not, not, it's not the time to increase more taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and just remember, your taxes are being raised by over 3% in this, here, and the colleagues voted for that.
Good morning. I'm Edward Eagleheart with Collection Action.
Ramsey did not vote for all of that. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm Edward Eagleheart with Collection Action for Youth. I stand here today on behalf of the community, youth, and young adults. We all understand that the public safety is important, but safety is, but safety is more than just policing. Right now, too much of our budget goes to law enforcement salaries, while too little is invested in very things that prevent the crime in the first place. Opportunity for young people. If we put more resources into after-school programs, jobs, training, mentorship, and safe community spaces, we, we wouldn't just be reaching, we wouldn't just be reacting to the problems, we would be solving them before they start. Every dollar we invest into the youth is a dollar that builds futures, reduces crime, and strengthens family. We can't keep overfunding policing while underfunding hope. I urge the Court to prioritize, prioritize our youth people and redirect some of those dollars and programs that create real safety, real opportunity, and a brighter future for Houston. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Sheriff, if you, you, were you here to speak? Okay, are we, were, were you here for? Okay, thank you. All right. Well, you're welcome to if you'd like. Okay, thank you, all right, well, you're welcome to if you'd like. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to be polite, yeah.
Good morning, Judge Adalgo, Commissioners, thank you so much, I'm just here for this very important vote. I've been on that side of the dais before in a different role, and I know these decisions are very important, but I encourage you, and really plead with you, just to, to recognize the importance of this moment. It, it's, it's been far overdue for us to make sure that we took care of Harris County peace officers, they're deserving of this race, this will be historic for them, it's been a long time coming, I don't know of another time where there was really pay parity between the Harris County Sheriff's Office, and, and constables, and, and other agencies, and the market simply now begs for us to have to make these decisions. And so, back in the spring, when you were starting to draft the, the budget for, you know, this upcoming budget year, I, I raised a red flag that we were gonna see a mass exodus if, if we did not take this important move to really look at pay parity, and I've talked to colleagues now.
Continue.
I, I've talked to colleagues now all around the state, and they're looking now at Harris County, because they're saying, we're gonna have to do the same. Other agencies that in the past we had to be following, now they're looking at what's happening here, because they understand that, that this is critically important. Look, I, I support a lot of the initiatives that we hear about here, a lot of the speakers here, first of all, I don't know of any other police agency that advocates this strongly in working with public health, and we've helped support the heart program, we want more of that, we want to see more deflection. We, we understand there's a lot of individuals that need support services in the community, and so we're a strong advocate for that, we want to be a partner for that. But in the meantime, we also need strong law enforcement, we see some of the violent situations that, that our men and women have to respond to on a daily basis, they have to put their life on the line every day, we've seen it here very recently, not only near, but across the country, where they're being ambushed, and other things are occurring, and they, they, they put on that uniform every day to protect and serve, and it, it's, it's something that you have to be mindful of, what are core services? And to me, when it comes to core services, you're talking about, you know, flooding, drainage, public infrastructure, and policing, and policing in my mind respectfully would, would be at the top. I'm not saying that the other things are not important, but when you're talking about a multi-billion dollar budget, there is money allocated out there, it's just a money of saying, what other areas can you maybe redirect, maybe do a little bit less of right now, until the financial outlook might, might change a little bit, and then we could try to do some more things that perhaps in the past, there wasn't infusion of money with ARPA and other things, but at the end of the day, it's about core services, and, and I would argue, when we talk to business owners, to community members, they want strong public safety across the board. The other things are nice, but, but it's time that we make sure that there's pay parity, because if there wasn't, and this didn't happen, we would see a mass exodus, and it would put a tremendous harm on public safety here in Harris County. We're doing a good job, deputies and constables are doing a good job, but it's time for Harris County peace officers to be paid fairly, to be paid well, and, and, and now's the time to do it, and so I want to thank all of you that have voiced support for this, and, and it's not lost on me, I understand these are tough, there's a lot of other things, we understand monies can be tight, but this is critically important, if not, we're really truly impacting public safety, we cannot retain the people that we have, and it, it's too easy for them just to go across the street, almost literally, and sign up for the same job, you know, the job market's changed, and we got to make sure we're paying our men and women what's fair.
Thank you, Sheriff, and, and thank you so much, first of all, for your work, and everybody you represent, and know that I, I so much support these races, I've been advocating for them for years. Let me, let me ask you something, in terms of the district attorney, would you say they're important to the work that you guys do?
Very much so.
And then, do you remember J-Web, when that collapsed in 2022, I think? Would you think maintaining that is important?
Very much so.
What about the judges and the backlog, when there was a backlog, and has the, has the reduction in the backlog helped you guys, and in what way?
It's helped us tremendously, we're, we're, you know, it's, it's very collaborative, our criminal justice system seems to be moving in a positive direction, and with making sure that individuals aren't just stuck in jail, and so, it, we're, we're becoming much more efficient when we looked at average length of stay and other metrics that we follow.
So Sheriff, I want you to know, it's, and before you were here, what we've seen is like, the, the police arguing, not, not actually arguing, but putting, putting the community on the opposite side of the police, and for the most part, certainly my position and a lot of the comments I heard, and I think what you're saying is, those don't need to be at odds, and, and it's possible to do both things in this budget, but the current proposal cuts the funding to maintain J-Web. The current proposal eliminates the associate judges that we're supposed to continue with the backlog, and in fact, the elected judges, several of them were here last week or two weeks ago, saying, if you cut this, we're gonna have a problem. And the proposal also cuts money from the district attorney's office, it also completely destroys the program entitled Juvenile Justice System for Mental Health, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, we talk about flooding being sort of the second most important thing, these are 27 projects that were promised in the bond that are right now not gonna get done, because we're at a $410 million deficit. So what I want you to know, Sheriff, is, I, like so many people, have spoken here, and I think I could speak for a lot of the community, I admire you and your troops, and I've seen, even before I was a county judge, you know, I think most of us have been a victim of crime in one way or another, and unfortunately, I'm not spared of that, so we understand, but especially being here, and, you know, the issue with the extra jobs, et cetera, I think if, if you in the future are sitting on this side of the dais, whether it be in the county or the city, or the federal government, whatever it is, I think you'll agree with me that it's important to make sure that we can be responsible with the budget, in other words, if it's possible not to cut vital services, like the district attorney, like J-Web, school inspection, safety inspections are being cut by the fire marshal, where they review the, the active shooter protocols, and also where they do fire inspections. I don't imagine you'd want to cut that.
May I respond?
Yeah.
I, I have been on that side of it, I was mayor pro temp for the city of Houston.
Right, I know, that's why I said, like, if you're on this side in the future, again.
And I was, you know, hand in hand with the mayor, as we had to close a multimillion-dollar budget gap, and we had to make tough decisions when it came to some furloughs, considering some layoffs, some reduction in some services, it's tough, it's not an easy thing, and it, it's not where, because of what we're, when we're taking care of our peace officers that keep us safe every day, that we have to say, oh, well, we're cutting this over here, that's a choice, there's other things that could be reduced that maybe we shouldn't be doing. And, and so it's easy to say, whoa, if we give y'all a raise, we're gonna have to cut from, you know, this child service, or whatever, it's tough, but I'm not on that side to say where I would cut. There's, I'm sure there, being on that other side, I know that there's a lot of spending that happens that we really shouldn't be spending. It's nice to spend, it's, it's projects that we may like individually, but having to really do what's for the greater good, and again, to me, an essential service that the community depends on is public safety. The other things, it's nice to have, there's a public sector out there, there's other resources that we could leverage, the business community that could give to foundations and other stuff, but this is one where government is expected to provide some.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I, but I, and I think we're both saying the same thing, that like, the judges, the J-Web, these school inspections, like, those are not nice to haves, like, I think what I'm hearing you say is, like, you don't have access to the budget, so you can't say, well, okay, I would do that instead of this, but, but we're not talking about, you know, nice to have. I think the point that I'm trying to make is, I would like to, and, and I'm making it in front of you, because you're, you're the leader in this, is, I would like for my colleagues to work with us so that we do not have to cut these essential services that are in fact important to law enforcement's ability to do the job, and I think that, in fact, that is possible, whether, first, the first solution needed to be to go to the voters for this, for the raises, because we simply did not have the money because of state revenue caps, but for whatever reason, they wouldn't go. I think, I'll speak for myself, but I think if we took a, a show of hands here, we would know, the voters probably will support this, I mean, the vast majority of people support law enforcement, we need them, we need y'all, whatever the situation is. Okay, they didn't go to the voters, so what about we phase this in, we check with the voters next year, what about we figure out how we can not kill all these flood control projects? I think if you told folks, hey, do you want to lose your flood control project, or do you want to go at least have a choice about it? So I just want you to know, I support this, I've been trying to figure out ways to do it without killing essential services. Instead of spending the summer figuring out what in the budget worked and what didn't, we spent the summer figuring out what to cut. So I don't think, I mean, they could take another look at, at how not to cut these essential services, I don't know that there is another way, I think they've done everything that can be done, but I, I just want my colleagues to try to get this done in a way that is not unrealistic. Once you choose not to go to the voters, it's impossible, it's impossible not to kill really, really important programs, and I really don't want to put the community against the law enforcement that they depend on.
And I appreciate that, Judge, but I, I've also seen where, where expenses have increased here, and we've taken care of others in terms of increasing pay for, for others.
I'm with you.
Exactly, and, and you know what, I, I support that, every employee in Harris County should be well compensated and reflective of the market, but I don't remember us conveying that we simply didn't have money, that we were gonna have to cut all other important criminal justice services because we were giving a certain group of, of Harris County employees a raise. Why is it that when it comes to peace officers, we can't seem to want to take care of that essential responsibility?
We want to, we absolutely want to, and here's the thing, it's a matter of dollars and cents, right?
Correct.
So the increases that have happened, it's, it's been a cost of living adjustment that happened for both law enforcement and county employees, so whatever raises the county employees have received, law enforcement has received as least as much. In fact, I'm pretty sure law enforcement has, has received more. Is it enough? No, sir, it's not enough, and that's why I've been advocating for even more since at least 2022. So I'm with you, and that's why it baffles me when there's a 120% pay increase to the toll road director, where there's a 60% increase to, I'm so sorry, this is your pay raise, I know you didn't ask for it, to the elected law enforcement, when, you know, we have doctors that aren't paid as much, certainly we're not, I'm not saying I should be, but anyway, it's very ad hoc, and, and you should know, like, our Institute of Frontal Sciences that does, does the autopsies, they're losing personnel. Our juvenile justice system, the, the folks that, that man those jails, they're losing personnel, they're not in this pay increase, even though I did ask. A lot, our public health department, they're losing personnel because they're not paid enough, so I want to prioritize this, I think that this, this could have happened without the situation, I know it could have, and now that they refuse to ask the voters what they wanted to see, let's figure out a way to make it both happen. But Sheriff, there is no raise that the employees have gotten that, that law enforcement has not gotten, we can pull it, but if, if anything y'all have gotten more, it's not enough, it's not enough. But this is not a, I, I don't think that anybody who's trying to be a responsible steward of taxpayer dollars would create a $200 million budget hole and then scramble to fix it without really fixing it, with just kicking can down the road, plus raising taxes, they raised taxes over 3%. Thank you, sir, for everything you do and your troops.
Thank you, Sheriff Gonzalez, for your leadership.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, thank you, thank you very much for coming down, and thank you for advocating for the troops. It is critical to understand when the market changes, in whatever regard. During the pandemic, we saw nurses leaving Houston Harris County, going to the West Coast. And here in recent times, we've seen our local engineers switch firms, leave the county. The market, when the market changes, it creates challenges, and I absolutely agree with you that in one area that we have to be at our utmost responsiveness is public safety. Imagine law enforcement officers not being in the neighborhoods that they were once policing, and you're right, just across the street, this has happened before. Early in my career, LAPD was making an incredible, incredible offer to law enforcement across, across the country. Houston cops were leaving in droves to go to LAPD. I almost did, I just didn't like the idea of having to move, so I stuck it out. But I'll tell you that it is also important, as you've been on the other side of this dais, over at City Hall, yeah, we can always go to the voters to make budget decisions, but we are elected to make those tough decisions. If the voters don't agree with it, they don't agree with it, but going to the voters for a tax increase isn't necessarily the work of this, that's, that's the easy job. Doing the work that has been done by most of us at this table is critical to demonstrate that we are elected to represent the folks, hear their issues, public safety, public infrastructure, emergency preparedness, all at the top of the list, regardless of where I've asked. It is important. So I just want to appreciate you being here, I want to appreciate the men and women that have been here earlier today, I don't know if Florida's still around, but I appreciate her being here in, in the spirit and solidarity of her late husband. So thank you for coming down, appreciate your, your words, appreciate your, your leadership, and thank you for all you and your, the men and women in the Harris County Sheriff's Office do.
Commissioner Garcia, so do you support firing our associate judges?
Look, the, the associate judges, that's up to the, that's up to the district judges to decide how they want to use them, and if they're not being well utilized.
They were here saying that they can't afford them, so they're gonna have to fire them? So are you, are you okay not contributing to our rainy day fund?
I would like to respond to the sheriff.
Because you just said emergencies were important.
Judge, I, I was just gonna suggest that if, if it's discussion between members of the court, that there needs to be an item that you're gonna be, you, you need to, to go through that process, otherwise it's just speakers now, but you, obviously you can direct anything to the speakers.
Okay, Jay, I appreciate that, I'm just saying, it's easy to say some words like that, and, and I would ask my colleagues if he supports not maintaining J-Web, if he supports not being able to, to properly do inspections, safety inspections in our schools, if he supports this 3% tax increase, because this is all that's happening right now, and so I think there's a little bit of doublespeak, because we are harming justice systems right now, and we don't have to do that, there, there's ways to do both, and sure, okay, you don't want to ask the voters about tax increase, well, I would say to my colleague, we asked voters, and they voted for a bond, and we have failed them by failing to deliver 27 projects, in fact, by killing 27 projects, so okay, don't go to the voters, spend $200 million that you don't have without their permission, but when you do go to the voters, how about you keep your promises? So that, that's what I would like to raise, and that's what I'm saying, we don't need to be pitted against each other, gentlemen, I am with you, I've been fighting for this stuff for years. Somebody here walked out of the room, which is why we couldn't give you this raise, otherwise you'd have had it two years ago, 2023, how many years ago is that? Two to three years, okay? And that's the truth. And I also believe that before we cut a bunch of services, we should check with the public, do you want to cut them, do you want to do both things, what do you want? Because the public never said, we never asked them, do you want to cut our rainy day fund so that we can do these raises? Nobody ever asked them that. We never asked the public, do you want to cut school safety inspections? I don't think the parents would say yes. Do you want to cut the emergency school shooter inspections in order to fund the races? I don't think they would say yes, I don't have a kid, and I don't have a kid in school, but I really don't think so.
Sheriff Gonzalez, I look forward to discussing all these issues when the agenda item comes up and we can all engage. Thank you for coming down here.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'd just say, if, if we're in a situation where we can't afford J-Web and other essential services, then we really have a spending problem, is what it is.
Yep.
And so.
Right, right, so, but they supposedly solved the spending problem, so what's the solution, colleagues, if, if it's your budget, why isn't the spending problem solved?
If you're asking, if you're asking the speaker a question, let the speaker respond.
Oh, I didn't ask a question, I'm just saying, it's their budget, so they've got the spending problem. I, I didn't propose this budget, I did not propose an unbalanced budget that would have a $200 million deficit, that's their budget, and they're already cutting all the children's programs, it's like sport for them, including the folks that brag about having kids, so the spending problem, Sheriff, it belongs to the three people that are proposing this budget, okay?
Sheriff Gonzalez, sorry, I'm next in the queue.
Sheriff Gonzalez, sorry, I'm next in the queue to speak. Sheriff Gonzalez, thank you for being here. To the brave men and women at the sheriff's office, everyone here today, as well as our eight constables and the brave men and women who work there, thank you for your service and sacrifice. I've proudly been championing this pay parity because it's the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do, and it's the responsible thing to do, to make sure that unincorporated Harris County is as safe as it can be and that we're not losing experienced officers and risking a mass exodus to surrounding agencies. So I too look forward to discussing it in detail when the item comes. And I encourage everyone to look at actual credible facts and evidence in the discussion. And I honor your service and sacrifice. And I know it's, to your point about families, your families don't know if you're going to come home at the end of the day. And so we honor you, we respect you. And again, we want you to stay here in Harris County to make Harris County as safe as it can be. So thank you.
I agree. And I'd invite you to show me the facts that you're disagreeing with. I wonder if she supports this budget she proposed? I think she does. And then I would say she also supports firing judges. She also supports ending school safety inspections. She also supports lowering our commitment to the rainy day fund. And I'm asking her privately to show me the numbers and facts that she says are not there because she's been telling people that we're not raising taxes when everybody here except for Commissioner did raise taxes. So if somebody's misleading, I have proof that they are. And they have failed voters by not delivering on flood control projects that were promised. Okay? So there are 27 projects, I'm showing them here, that are not going to be delivered. That is true, Commissioner Ramsey. So if you have data, numbers that contradict what I'm saying, please show them now. If you want to show them later, why is that? If you're so confident, bring them up, gentlemen.
Judge, Commissioner Garcia and Ramsey have raised a point of order.
Yes, yes, Jay, I know whose side you're on in this. All right, let's move on to the speakers. And please show me the data and numbers.
Thank you, and Sheriff Gonzalez.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And as I said before, gentlemen, we're trying to only do snapping. So if the other community wants to clap as well, I'll give you a chance then because we didn't earlier. Stand and do all of that. Yeah, all right, all right. All right, thank you. Since we're all clapping and standing and yelling, this is what I'm saying doesn't need to happen. We don't need to be pitted against each other. These colleagues have caused that. We can still solve it. We can still have both things. We can. All right, let's hear from the rest of the speakers. And please, folks, if we keep the hooting and the clapping without, if we could do without that, otherwise everybody gets to hooting, hollering, clap and stand. Tiffany, if you'd continue with the speakers.
Speaking on item two, Jade Miller, Tiffany Echovaria, Precinct One, Byron Garrett of Precinct One, Sophia Ansari of Precinct Four, Marilyn Allen of Precinct Four, Alfredo Dominguez of Precinct One. You each have one minute.
I do want to note the members that are standing up rather than listen to speakers who possibly disagree with them. Go ahead.
From the very beginning, I knew that Commissioner Tom Ramsey, thank you for staying seated today, by the way, and Adrian Garcia were never the ones I was trying to convince. Their positions have been very clear and their votes predictable. Y'all must have sent a fire email to bring them out today. My appeal was always to been, has been to those who claim to represent fairness, balance, and the people most needed in the county. Yet here we are. The final budget reflects choices that will echo far beyond today, choices that sacrifice long-term investment in our youth. And I must say this directly, did you ever consider that people just don't want to be law enforcement anymore and have better opportunities? Or that law enforcement aren't the only group of people that need to work more than two jobs? Commissioner Bionis, as a Precinct Four resident, it's going to be a rough election cycle for you in 2026, babe. You chose expediency, poor research, and fear over courage in history, and the voters will not forget.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
Jade Miller.
Thank you. And she may have $3 million, but citizens and voters will find out where that came from and how she's been awarding contracts for three years.
It shouldn't be community versus constables. Our budgeting process should not be hijacked by special interest groups and your personal agendas. We should prioritize our county's ability to respond to flooding and weather events. If we're going to talk about a mass exodus like it's imminent, let's also talk about the next weather event like it's coming. The flood bond projects will be stopped because of this rushed decision. Delay the vote and fix the budget. I thought Austin would do us in, but it looks like we're willing to do it to ourselves. There's enough time to compromise. Be transparent. Do not let special interest groups tear us apart. Spending over a billion on public safety will mean nothing if we're 10 feet underwater. God save our county. My name is Tiffany Echovaria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marilyn Allen. I'm with Collective Action for Youth, and I'm a resident of Precinct Four. Some of you have chosen to use your power that leaves community way behind. You were elected to serve the whole community. Choosing to expand policing budgets while neglecting community-led solutions is a choice to ignore prevention, a choice to ignore opportunity, and a choice to ignore the needs of the people that you serve. I urge you to reconsider your choice. Vote for a budget that puts community first, invest in people, and show Harris County that real leadership means investing in community and not abandoning it. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sophia Ansari, and I'm with Riaz Kavali. As a resident of Harris County Precinct Four, I urge you to include dedicated funding for the arts and culture in this Harris County budget. The arts are good business and they improve public health by reducing stress and supporting healing. They fuel our economy, employing thousands and attracting visitors who spend at local businesses. They enhance public safety by giving young people safe, creative alternatives. And they advance equity, bringing opportunities to neighborhoods that often have the fewest resources. I ask that you create a line item for arts and culture, integrate arts into existing departments like health and juvenile justice, and establish a cultural equity fund to ensure all communities benefit. When you fund the arts, you invest in healthier, safer, and stronger communities across Harris County. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, where we could have found a savings to fund, you know, some of the programs folks are proposing, or even to not have to have this deficit, we've been working for years to have a performance-based budgeting. In other words, to be able to look at the existing funding and see if it's actually beneficial, impactful, worth it, and then decide whether to continue it or not. This year, we were not able to do that because we spent all the time trying to figure out how to make up for an artificial deficit that was created. If instead, we had gone through everything, then maybe we could have afforded those things. That's how we could have found that. But we had no time for the process because some of us were in a hurry to get an endorsement. You know, people have asked me, as I announced my decision not to run for a third term, what I regret. And I have some examples. And I'm thinking now with this budget, my top regret was believing somebody's words when they told me they were committed to community and when they told me they were committed to truth and appointing that person as a judge. And then redrawing a district for that person so that they could win because I believed they were going to be a careful steward of taxpayer dollars.
Point of order, Jay.
When you interrupt me, that tells you it's important.
Point of order.
All right, we'll hear from somebody else. Do we need to censure the gentleman who interrupted? Maybe? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I really want to start by saying that I don't fault the constables and the sheriffs for showing up. If I was getting 30% raise and we were having a big testimony about it, I also would show up in a suit and testify for it. So I don't fault people for wanting to get paid more money. What I don't understand is the conduct and the rationale by our elected officials here. At this point, there's not much to say, right? The points have been made. We've turned out hundreds of community members to say, and we finally today have other people turning out saying that they want these raises to happen for the first time, which, you know, that's fine, right? You know, we're okay with that process. But the thing is, it goes to show the way in which community is held to a different standard than law enforcement, right? We have to turn out hundreds of people over the course of a month and a half just to get people to talk about and say that the causes that we care about are important. But law enforcement can come on the last day and say that these raises are really important, it's probably going to pass anyways, right? Because that's how this county is run and that's what the priorities of the county are. And it's extremely disappointing, not only to me and other community groups, but to community members. Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Alfredo Dominguez.
I think we'd do better even with a Republican in that seat, certainly with a different Democrat. The budget would be responsible and we could give the raises. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, the budget was stronger when we had a Republican there. We did not have a hiring freeze and we could have given the raises in 2022. Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Sergeant Byron Garrett, Jr. I want to sincerely thank this court for your leadership on this raise. This decision not only impacts the sheriff's office, but every law enforcement family in Harris County. Because of your support, I can now put aside my HPD background package and stay fully committed to serving here where my heart is truly is at. This raise means that we can fully recruit and keep good deputies. It means fewer extra jobs, more time at home with our loved ones. Deputies who come to work will be rested and ready to protect the community with professionalism and pride. We know you may have competing demands and that your commitment, it means even more. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for giving us this raise that we deeply needed in Harris County. Three of the Commissioners here, Commissioner Ramsey Garcia and Commissioner Ellis, I met each one of you guys working an extra job. This really will help us out. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Speaking on item two, Alex Campbell of Precinct One, Michael Galloway of Precinct One, Brady Lewis of Precinct Three, Julio Medina of Precinct One, Amy Erickson of Precinct Two, Carolina Cano of Precinct One. You each have one minute.
Good afternoon, county judge and commissioners. My name is Alex Campbell, and I'm with Collective Action for Youth. I'm a resident of Precinct One, and I'm here today to speak in opposition to the FY26 budget. Going forward, I just urge you all to invest in community-driven solutions that tackle root causes rather than just traditional methods that maintain the status quo. The young people we serve at CA4Y are counting on you all to invest long-term in their futures going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am a father of six children. And each and every day, I got to get up and I always tell them to stand up for what is right and speak when nobody's saying anything. And I'm also here to speak on behalf of 35% of your constituents that do not have fathers. They don't have fathers to help guide them. They look to me and our other mentors in our program for the guidance. You are going to take away opportunities and hope from these young people that are going to end up in the criminal justice system. I promise, I am one of them. I was one of them. I didn't have a father, but these individuals have mentors that are speaking life and you're about to take everything from them. Me, as a father, if I don't have the money for something and my kid asks for something, I tell them, not right now. When we can afford it, I will do it. In the same manner, if we don't have the money to afford it right now, it's just delay it. Delay the vote. That's it.
Thank you, your time is up.
Or find the money.
It's going to make it harder in the cities, I promise.
Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
Y'all all make the same money that most of the people.
If folks want to respond, they need to come to the mics so that they can be heard by the folks online. But thank you. Hey, I agree. I think if they're proposing a budget, it should not cut judges or school inspections or the IT system that keeps our justice system going. So, you know, if it's such a great solution, why does it cut that? Why not do a realistic process? Why, if it's so great, why are we still killing 27 projects? I think they can do better, or otherwise, let's work together. Let's negotiate and get both things done and not have the communities pitted against each other. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Brady Lewis, and I work with Collective Action for Youth, a nonprofit dedicated to improving the lives of young people impacted by the juvenile justice system. Our vision of safety is rooted in prevention, in creating opportunities and providing resources that keep youth from entering the justice system in the first place. That means addressing the gaps that make young people vulnerable, the absence of mentorship, limited opportunities, unmet mental health needs, housing insecurity, and a lack of investment in their futures. The funds that are being cut are not just dollars on the paper, they are lifelines. These funds provide critical support that help you stay safe, stable, and connected to positive pathways. Our belief in safety doesn't dismiss the role of law enforcement, but true public safety prioritizes prevention, investing in systems that stop cycles to harm before they begin rather than only responding after harm has already occurred. Today, as you prepare to finalize the budget, I want to remind you what's at stake. Cutting funds may balance the ledger, but it puts our young people in our community at greater risk. By contrast, protecting and sustaining these funds means investing in long-term safety and a success in Harris County.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Amy Erickson, a lifelong Harris County resident, speaking in favor of the proposed budget. This budget meets critical needs, public safety and public health, without an additional general fund tax increase. Increase is funding for crucial programs like heart, providing responses to homelessness and behavioral health issues while reducing costly law enforcement interventions. This approach is essential during uncertain times with DC and Austin policies threatening residents' financial well-being. This responsible budget protects essential services while keeping the general tax fund rate stable. Property tax increases disproportionately burdened lowest-income families and renters who dedicate the largest portion of their budgets to housing. Now is not the time for further tax increases to struggling families. Even if the window for a ballot measure were open, with accusations of misinformation flying, public trust has been harmed, making ballot measures unlikely. Please work together to strike the right balance between fiscal responsibility and community protection. I urge the court to approve this budget today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd invite my colleagues to debate with me on their version of misinformation and the facts that I bring. I have brought numbers and dollars and cents and clear information. If they think their numbers are so right, let's put them side to side because I'm confident in mine. And I realize you said there's not a general fund tax increase. Thank you for being real direct about that. But obviously, when you pay your tax bill, your tax rate is going up, your Harris County tax rate is going up. And they've been saying that it's not. Of course, now they've changed it, and I know you understand how the taxes work. Most people don't, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge Hidalgo. My name is Julio Medina. I'm a credible messenger with Collective Action for Youth. I am here to advocate for the communities I serve and the young people I mentor. Harris County is facing a deficit of around $200 million, but to cover that gap, we're talking about cuts and freezes in the departments that serve our most vulnerable residents, public health, housing, and even early childhood programs. For underprivileged families, those programs are essential. They provide safe spaces, mentors, and opportunities. Without them, the gap between the haves and have-nots only widens. And we know these investments work. Every dollar spent guiding a child today is far cheaper than tens of thousands of dollars it costs to incarcerate the same child tomorrow. This budget should not just balance the books, it should protect our future. And the future of Harris County lies in the lives of its youth, especially those with the least. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Caroline Cano, and I'm the Government Relations Manager for the Houston Food Bank. We are in support of the general budget that funds the support of community center operations. Through these, as you may know, through these community centers, we have offered meals for seniors, disaster reports, summer feeding for children, and our food prescription program that actually recently opened up in Bayland Community Center. We look forward to providing more opportunities and partnership with you. Thank you so much for your hard work on this budget and the support of the communities we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking on item two, Cynthia Cruz of Precinct Two, Randy Trevino of Precinct Two, Maria Mendez of Precinct One, Evelyn Barron of Precinct One, Ruben Salazar of Precinct Two, Ladonna Lubek of Precinct Three, and Michael Duffy. You each have one minute.
Good afternoon. I stand here today with a heavy heart and a great sense of disappointment in both Garcia and Bionis. Today, a budget will be passed, and with it, a message was sent loud and clear that a person who looks like me, who comes from my community, has chosen to invest in police rather than our people. At a time when our neighborhoods are hurting, when families are struggling to put food on the table, when our youth are crying out for an opportunity, you have chosen to double down on a system that has historically harmed us. down on a system that has historically harmed us. You have chosen to fund patrols over programs, prisons over school, and punishments over progress. This is not only disappointing, it's a betrayal, a betrayal of our history, our values, and our struggle. The people who elected you, who believed in you deserve better. We deserve leaders who will invest in our communities, not police them.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Maria Mendez.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Cruz and I'm a credible messenger with Collective Action for Youth. And I stand before you today deeply frustrated by the budget deficit that's going to be created by your decisions. It's troubling to see that at the time we should be investing in the future of our communities, you're prioritizing more funding for already highly-paid law enforcements. We have all stood here time and time again pleading not to cut resources from critical programs like youth development, healthcare, and initiatives that have been proven to reduce crime. These cuts will have a negative impact. You're not only neglecting the root causes of crime, but you're also abandoning our community's potential for growth and healing. I would demand of our next commissioners to find solutions that build safer, healthier communities to education prevention and support, not just policing. Thank you.
Seeing that our commissioners' court was consisted of three people who are of Hispanic descent, Judge Hidalgo, Commissioner Breones, and Commissioner Garcia, I immediately thought, "We finally have a seat at the table." After generations of struggle, sacrifice, and endless work in the shadows, our leaders, people who look and sound like me, are finally in the rooms where decisions are made. This is a moment we should celebrate, but a seat at the table is worth nothing if you forget who put you there. Breones and Garcia, you are choosing to invest in more policing and more prisons. You're pouring money into systems that punish our people, not programs that lift them up. This isn't progress, this is a betrayal. Putting constables over communities that have given you seats is a betrayal. Leading with your heritage and making decisions that oppress your people is a betrayal. We need more handcuffs, we don't need more handcuffs, we need more hope. We don't need more police cars, we need more childcare programs. We don't need more enforcement, we need more empowerment. To our leaders, I say this: Don't forget your story, don't forget our story. Your seat at the table, not just to be seen, but to be speak for those who are still unheard. Take investment to communities and not police.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Evelyn Barron.
Thank you, and I agree, if the concern were public safety, they would fund the raises and the other public safety adjacent programs and the programs that have been proven not to reduce crime, but some folks are only here to get re-elected. That's really what the walk card should say, "Goal: Get re-elected." Period. And they're willing to hand-award contracts so they can get contributions, and they're willing to support whoever offers an endorsement in an irresponsible way. Could do it in January, but they gotta do it in September because they need that endorsement. It ain't right, and I'm really glad folks are noticing this and the budget is really not going under the radar this year. And again, I'd love to negotiate with my colleagues so that we can do both things. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Randy Trevino from the Raíces Collab Project. Raíces means roots, and we chose that name because we understand as experts in ecosystems that everything is in fact connected, and the most precious part of an ecosystem are the roots, are the raíces, are where we come from. And police are important. I'm not saying they are not, and I wish that we could have all the money to give everybody races, but Commissioner Garcia, I think you understand that your district in particular has people making as low as $17,000 a year, $20,000 a year. So, we understand what making low money means, and I've made money even higher than that and I understand that even then, things are tight, especially because in the last few years, property values have skyrocketed and we have to pay for that. While, say, places like these unincorporated places, the companies that endorse many of you, they don't pay taxes. They don't pay taxes the way we do. Their property values get frozen for 10 or 15 years at a time.
Thank you, your time is up.
Right, but they fund almost 100% of their campaign coffers because they get contracts hand-awarded without going through a request for proposals or procurement process. And I think, so that's why, you know, we had an evaluated and designed by every office childcare program to see if the community wanted childcare, but they wouldn't even just ask the voters whether to continue that. What about the families that make this much money? What about all these tens of thousands of families that are going to lose their childcare without an opportunity for voters to decide whether they want that or not? I think you're bringing a really good point, and it just goes back to, we talk and talk about kids and having kids, but if they don't donate to the campaign or they don't endorse, they're not important to some of the people here.
Thank you.
Okay, first I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. It took long enough to get up here because we have to go into rages for a long time and we only get one minute each, and it really is insulting to us who have come here and spent hours waiting to get up here. It's almost 1 o'clock. I have been here since 9:00 AM and I could not get my one minute, and that wasn't what I came to speak about, but I'm frustrated. Public safety is very important and in the neighborhoods, unincorporated areas are safer to be in because of the constables and the sheriffs being in the neighborhoods. It is sad to know that officers have to do two and three jobs in order to make money because of their low pay. In some cases, the officers can make a much or more extra jobs.
Go ahead and wrap up your remarks.
Okay. I also need to work, they also need to work with the federal laws as well. We need to make sure all of this is taken care of in our city. You talk about raises from '22, why three years to get around to bringing up again? Remember, they are county employees also. Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you so much.
Thank you, it's hard yet to wait so long to come up and speak. Thank you. It's hard yet to wait so long to come up and speak because of the rages.
Ma'am, I think she needs to hear your name for the record, if you don't mind.
Oh.
Thank you.
Ladonna Donnie Burkheimer Lubec.
Thank you, and I absolutely agree. There's an officer, and I wish I remembered her name right now, but she was working an extra job on the toll road with her daughter there in the car and, you know, goes to the point of the importance of childcare, but also goes to the point of these extra jobs is not safe enough. She didn't have the right equipment, the right lights. Somebody going at top speed ended up causing this woman's death, so I absolutely agree with you. Yes, yes, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Ruben Salazar and I'm a resident community advocate from Precinct Two. I'd like to thank Commissioners Court for being able to collaboratively bring forward a balanced budget that prioritizes the most needed services and projects across the county. I'd also like to support the recent salary increases for our local law enforcement. Public safety is a core service and fair pay is essential to keep in our neighborhoods, especially my neighborhood of East Aldean, safe and thriving. Competitive salaries help retain experienced officers who know our communities and allow us to recruit quality talent in a competitive job market. In areas like East Aldean where public safety challenges are very real, having officers who are invested here and staying in the community helps build trust, improve response times, and strengthens relationships with our residents. A safer community means more opportunities for families, businesses, and the future of East Aldean. So, thank you Commissioner Garcia, Breones, and Ramsey for helping get this over the finish line.
Wonderful, thank you for being here. Thank you for your voice.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you Commissioners for your hard work. My name is Theodore Nett, I'm a resident of Harris County. I just wanted to simply say, express my gratitude and appreciation for you guys putting the pay raises on the agenda or on the budget. Listening to some of the people, I will say this as well, I feel compelled to say so, as a peace officer, as a public servant, I feel like we're selfless, it's a selfless service, right? So, a lot of stuff we do goes unrecognized, but I think with this pay raise, this allows us a token of appreciation, you know, well overdue in my 18 years of experience. So, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Mike Duffy of Core Business Technologies. We've been a partner to Harris County since 2017. Core was awarded this business as a subset of financial service RFP, including our payment processing technology. In the last 12 months, we've processed over $2.7 billion. In Q3 of '22, the county initiated a new RFP to refresh its financial services. The RFP is still in process. Many firms responded to the RFP, providing the county a detailed set of capabilities and price discovery. Despite this open RFP, a concerning decision emerged in May of '25. The tax assessor decided to sole-source a different contract instead of allowing the RFP process to be completed. A new contract represents $1 million more in constituent fees compared to the RFP pricing we have submitted. The assessor did not bring the contract before the court because it uses $0 from the county budget. Instead, the county is funded directly from your constituents, $7.5 million annually. Further payment fees are a de facto tax on your constituents and Texas state statute requires the court approve any contract collecting payment fees.
Sir, which item are you referring to?
Agenda item four.
Not on the agenda? What'd you say?
Not expressly on the agenda, this felt like the most appropriate.
No, no, I mean, if it is four, oh wait, so this is transmittal of the appraisal rule? Is that Dr. Director?
It's a non-agenda item.
It's a non-agenda item, so it is on the agenda though, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it is not on the agenda.
It is not on the agenda, so it's not up for a vote today? Okay, well, we can check, we'll have somebody follow up to see when it is on so we can discuss it. You mentioned the RFP process, just for the benefit of everybody here, anything that goes through the procurement department does go through a procurement process, just like it does in every level of government, private companies. So, that's what you went through, and of course, you have objections, that'll be reviewed by the independent folks. All of the flood bond, like this money that people voted for, as well as the tolls that people pay, that's the money that my colleagues use without an RFP process, doing what my staff was accused of and did not do, and what the public health director was accused of but did not do. That's the money that they spend to give away contracts, I'm not exaggerating, to the people that then turn around and donate. This gentleman, you know, obviously you went through an RFP, so it's not that.
Judge, thank you very much for that, and a quick clarification. We are part of an open RFP as your current vendor to refresh services, and the tax assessor sole-sourced a contract separately and away from the RFP process that we are pointing out will cost more than $1 million when compared to the RFP pricing.
But the point is, you go through the procurement department, they don't like call somebody and tell them who to choose.
Yes ma'am, we do. It's an imperfect process, but one that we celebrate as government vendors.
Right, and there's others, there's no record, I guess they make a phone call and tell the director, "Hey, pick this contractor." There's no record of how it gets picked, and we voted last year to change that, but I just found out that it hasn't been changed.
Judge. Because it is an open procurement, you should talk to the purchasing department. Okay?
All right.
Thank you Commissioner. And Judge, to your point, there are procedures in place when sole-source or reference contract is used that involve evaluating the competitiveness of the landscape and determining if a sole-source or reference contract is appropriate.
Right, as it should be. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's an honor to serve Harris County, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, Judge.
Okay, thank you, and I just got a note from my staff that there are some judges that would like to come, so maybe I suggest we take a little break, or should we take the lunch break? Maybe a little break so that they can speak. So, how about we break for 10 minutes until 1:10 and then we'll take the speakers. So, my colleagues also deleted my ability to have media availability here during court. They don't want me to share my perspective, so I'll just have the judges speak at a media availability somewhere else. They won't let me do the media availability here during lunch. They voted to silence me in that way last time, so they will not allow us to wait for the judges because they know the judges obviously don't like this budget. They would like to see it figured out a different way, but fine colleagues, I will just have them speak to the media in the media availability that you would not allow me to do in the courtroom in order to silence me. I'm creative like that. All right, so it's 12:58 and we will break until 2 o'clock. All right, so it's 12:58, and we will break until 2 o'clock.
Okay. It is now two twenty-seven and we have returned from lunch. And are there any more speakers?
No, sir.
No more speakers?
No.
All right, I am looking for my agenda. Okay, so the first item is item number one. A request for approval of authorized budget appropriation transfers for the flood control district and certain county departments.
Make a motion.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramsey.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three oh. We've done the public hearings, correct?
No, no Commissioner, we're going to have to
Okay.
open up the public hearings.
Pardon me, is Commissioner Ellis, is he coming? Okay.
Okay, so we'll go into the first public hearing. Request by the Office of O M B to hold a public hearing for discussion approval of the F Y twenty twenty-six annual budget for Harris County and the Harris County Total Road Authority. Is there any speakers on this item? No speakers? All right, what's the language I move to close the hearing?
Correct.
I move to close the hearing. On item two, do we vote on the item now?
Yes, this item will require that.
Yes.
And I know there's a series of motions associated with it.
Okay.
Would you like me to walk through Commissioner? The motions for item two?
Yes.
So, the first one is move to allocate nine million dollars of fiscal year twenty-six mobility funds from each Commissioner precinct to the county engineer for a total allocation of thirty-six million.
So moved.
There's a motion made? Second? Second, second by Commissioner Ramsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three oh.
And then Commissioners, we, for the next two, these are just belts and suspenders to ensure that we are complying with state law, both S B twenty-three as well as the law that requires us to pay longevity pay for the, for law enforcement officers, so.
Read the next motion.
Motion that the fiscal year twenty-six proposed salary, as reflected in the fiscal year twenty-six proposed law enforcement pay scale for any classification, is inclusive of longevity pay authorized by local government code one fifty-two, up to including twenty-five years of service.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three oh.
Motion to direct O M B and H R T.
I'm sorry, who was the first and second motion for that item, Commissioner?
Motion by Commissioner Breonius, second by Commissioner Ramsey.
Motion to direct O M B and H R T to work with all law enforcement agencies.
Sorry, I'm sorry, the judge is here, back now. I know she's presiding, but I think her, she was here when that item was read, so if she wants, she needs to cast her vote as yes, no, or abstention, I suppose.
So, so there were some routine items, one, four, five, and seven, did we already vote on those?
One was voted on.
One was voted on, Judge.
The transfer funds, okay, I guess we won't be able to take that back up, but four is a transmittal by the tax assessor on the certified appraisal rule, five is a transmittal tax assessor on tax year twenty twenty-five, and an R tax rate and V A R tax rate, seven is purchasing approval of an interlocal renewal option with the Harris Center and the Sheriff's Office. So, is there, are there any of these items that colleagues would like to discuss, or can we go ahead and vote on those?
Vote.
All right, is there a motion for items four, five, and seven? Motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramsey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have six, which is an executive session item. Before that, we'll take items two and three under public hearings. So, which item were we on when Commissioner Ellis and I had walked out, or hadn't arrived yet?
We were going through the motions for item two, Judge.
Okay, so two, did, did we open the public hearing? Okay, so we said, at this time we have a public hearing for item two, public hearing is page two, and then, did we close the public hearing?
Yes, Judge.
Okay, the public hearing was closed, and just for the record, Commissioner Ellis and I were not here, there was a press conference that happened, so that mine had to start late, and obviously, we could have started with something else, but, you know, this started without our presence. So there's a, now there's discussion, has there been a motion for motion one, two, and three, or which ones have been motioned? There's, the first one is a motion to not authorize, oh, actually, yeah, I'd like to propose motions. Has there, has a motion been made?
So, motion one and motion three have been voted on. Motion two, the county administrator has requested no action, will come back in the October court with a more fleshed out proposal, and I, motion four was about to be read out.
Okay, so, okay, so, so I would like to make some motions, can I make some motions? Okay.
Sure, Judge.
So, so, and I, I sent this around earlier, but I'm right, I'm requesting an independent audit into the implementation of the twenty-eighteen flood bond program due to the four hundred and ten million dollar flood bond deficit. And so, here are my, my motions. Motion to wait to authorize the hundred million dollars for new raises until it is determined with certainty with an external financial advisor that the funds cannot be used as a solution to reduce the four hundred and ten million dollar flood bond deficit and deliver some of the promised flood bond projects that have now been stopped, and I want to note, it's actually about two hundred and forty, not a hundred million that are, that's being committed over five years. Second motion would be to direct the county auditor to conduct an independent analysis of the flood control districts' use of flood bond funds, including whether funds were used outside their authorized bond purposes and the process by which contracts were awarded, a timeline and rationale for the order of contract awards, and an explanation of how the four hundred and ten million dollar deficit developed, when it was first identified, whether it could have been reduced, and the extent to which factors such as inflation versus mismanagement contributed. Where inflation is cited, the auditor should also explain why deficits of this scale are not seen across other county infrastructure projects. Finally, motion to direct O M B, the Office of Management Budget, to develop a detailed proposal of financing solutions to close the four hundred and ten million dollar flood bond deficit developed in consultation with both existing and new outside financial advisors, and all of this no later than November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I just want to offer for the record, the, the map of the twenty-seven flood control projects that currently are not taking place. Of course, I believe that before we create a new deficit and cut judges and school safety inspections and, and civilian employees of our public safety offices, we should, we should be responsive to something that the voters did vote on. The two hundred and forty million dollars that will be spent over five years without the voter's approval is about three-fourths of what, what could get these programs restarted. We are in the middle of hurricane season, and I urge those who live in these neighborhoods to please follow along, I, I don't think it's acceptable to have a four hundred and ten million dollar deficit. So those are my motions. Do I have a second? Okay, I, I don't have a second, but I wanted to make sure people heard about it so that when these projects don't get done, they know that I did try to figure out why, and, and just to remind everybody, it is possible to have the raises and these projects. Of course, colleagues decided not to engage in any kind of negotiation leading to cuts to vital services.
Judge, I'd like to comment on the flood control.
Yes, Commissioner Ramsey.
You brought that up two or three times today. Let me put that into context. We've spent a lot of times over the last three months going through, sorting through, being sure we've got a plan going forward on flood control. And here's the rest of the story. In twenty eighteen, we voted for a bond, a two-point-five billion dollar bond, and got to work and went out and found another two-point-seven billion dollars in funds to go with the two-point-five. So that's five-point-two billion dollars in projects that we will be doing, all because the voters voted on a bond in twenty eighteen. There's been one-point-five billion dollars thus far invested in flood control projects in Harris County that is directly funded coming out of that bond, and, which is good news. We saw that in Barrow, there were homes that were not flooded because of that original, those projects that were, were built. At our last meeting, we had a plan defined clearly to do another three and a half billion dollars in flood control projects. That's on the table. That's going to be done. So, it's historic. The voters voted on two-point-five billion in projects. We're going to end up doing over five billion, that is assured, that is funded, those projects are defined, and we're going to bid. And I can tell you, just having done a few of these, that it's probably going to take three-plus years, three to five years, to get those projects bid, and if you understand construction, if you understand how that happens, then you need to really spread that out so that you can get good bids and people to compete for them. I, I believe that by the end of the process of those three and a half billion that we're going to be bidding, starting like soon, when we get those done, we're going to figure out the four hundred million that's rest here. The term was used earlier today that twenty-six projects had been killed, that, that wasn't what happened. They're paused, and they're paused for engineering reasons. There's budget reasons, and we're going to find those, we're going to find those dollars, but there'll be a preliminary engineering report, that means thirty percent design on every one of those projects, and there'll be funding pursued, so I think it's going to work out in a great way in the coming, coming months in terms of funding. The state of Texas has fifteen billion dollars set aside for water projects, which includes flooding and others, the federal dollars that are going to be out there in a similar fashion, so I'm optimistic about those. So, this is good news, three and a half billion dollars in flood control projects are about to be bid. I recognize flood control and Dr. Peterson and what she's done, I look forward to seeing those projects becoming a reality.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Tom, for setting the record straight on that, coupled with the fact that the major reason for the deficit is because the G L O under Commissioner Bush shortchanged Harris County. And so, the fact that we're not in the whole five hundred million, but rather four hundred and change, indicates that where possible, Dr. Peterson and her team did, was able to stretch the dollars and get some additional projects done, so just want to make sure that we added some more context to that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis.
I'd just like to say that, as pleased as we are with where we are, we should never lose sight of the fact we did not follow the prioritization framework, and it took a lot of effort to get us to back up. I thought the instructions were clear to begin with, but at some point, we will have to go back to the voters, and I hope that all of these projects are funded, I hope the state steps in, but if we have to go back, I think the precedent was set for having a prioritization framework, and whether any of us are here or not, I'm pretty sure that that will be the standard that the voters will expect. And when we do it again, assuming it's there, and we put a prioritization framework in place, we do have to follow it, or you're going to have a very difficult time getting the support from local people to pass it again. And, Tom, I don't know as much about construction as you do, but I do know a little bit about finance, and know quite a bit about going to those voters, I've had to do it for about forty-two years, particularly when it comes to bond issues, so I want to stress that. I'm glad that we backed up, we took a deep breath, this court unanimously felt that cost-benefit ratio was a problem, but then, the court did not follow through on it, so I want to stress that. The G L O was part of the problem, but once we realized that the G L O money was not coming in, we still came back, and we refused to follow that prioritization framework, so I just want to stress that, because when it's time to go back to those voters, some of us ought to be here, but if not, those advocates that helped put us back on track, I hope they remember it, but with that said.
Commissioner Breonius.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Peterson and team, I know last court unanimously, five oh, we voted on moving forward quartile one projects, following the prioritization framework, creating a contingency fund, as well as moving forward all of the partnership projects, and I want to thank, it's amazing that we have been able to secure the two-point-seven-two billion in partnership funds, and last week, we blessed three-point-five billion dollars of projects are moving forward, and I especially, given the challenges we had had in the past, I especially am thankful for the leadership of G L O Commissioner Don Buckingham, who has been fair, collaborative, and is really helping us to drive this progress, and I appreciate the five offices working together in the bond working group with Dr. Peterson. So, thank you very much, and we look forward to delivering on these next three-point-five billion dollars of projects.
Thank you, and, and I'd just like to add, I appreciate all of our offices working together, as Commissioner Breonius said, and moving forward the projects that have been able to be moved forward, but, you know, you can, you can talk, you can say whichever numbers you want, but the fact of the matter is, we do not have the money to finish building these projects, and if the idea that, let's hope we get the money, is enough to fund something, then let's hope we get the hundred million colleagues and then make, call that a day. I, I wonder if my colleagues might answer, if they're so confident about what's happening, why not agree to an external audit of this? I think we owe it to the taxpayers, they voted for this bond, four hundred and ten million dollars is not chum change, this is just a little more than all those raises over five years. Could double the raises, it's a big deal, twenty-seven projects, a lot of projects, so. So colleagues, why not do an audit to figure out why this happened? That should tell you something.
Judge, are we in the middle of a vote?
Excuse me?
About to vote on item now?
No, because there was no second.
There were a couple of items that we voted on earlier. I want to be shown voting yes on item one. And two, voting no on item two, on item two, would not change the votes. I just asked for unanimous consent.
Commissioner, we pulled item two. We're going to come back in October.
Okay.
Sorry, the motion number two on your list.
Just one, the only one we voted on?
Correct.
Okay.
And number three.
So you voted on number three as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we, so again, an example of how certain folks are silencing those who disagree on the court. Commissioner.
Judge, I'll change it. I'd like to be shown voting yes on item one reluctantly, because I don't think it gets us around the issue that we're trying to do. And I'd like to be shown voting yes on item three.
Okay. I'd like to be shown abstaining on item one. We, again, these are funds that are not adequately let in terms of contracts. And then on item three, I'd like to be shown opposing. I think we can do both things without pitting the community against each other.
So what is item three? Just so I know, maybe should I have my numbers right?
Item three is just when we.
Sure. What I was going to suggest is if Mr. Ramos wants to read the two again, just for the record, so it's clarity for both Commissioner and the judge. So I first with one and then three.
So this has nothing to do with the very first item, number one?
No, no, no. These are the most, I apologize. These are, just for the record, these are the motions related to item two. Okay.
So number one was move to allocate $9 million of fiscal year 26 mobility funds from each commissioner precinct to the county engineer for a total allocation of $36 million.
Okay. I'll vote for that.
Item.
Is there any objection?
On item two?
On item one.
On item one?
First motion. He just made reference to.
So that one I'm abstaining on.
Okay.
So then it'll be a four?
Four.
One.
Four, one abstention.
Then item three, motion that the fiscal year proposed salary, as reflected in the fiscal year 26, proposed law enforcement pay scale for any classification is inclusive of longevity pay authorized by local government code 152, up to and including 25 years of service. This is just the belts and suspenders item, Commissioner. We are required by law to pay longevity pay. When we came together, we made a concerted effort to simplify our pay scale, to make it easier for, you know, the recruits, for universal services, H R T, and the law enforcement departments to have one consolidated pay scale as opposed to a base salary plus incentives. But we are required by law to include longevity. So it just says that that longevity pay is included.
So we have no choice. We have no choice. We have to vote.
Yes, sir.
I'm fine. I'll vote for that.
Okay. And that's the one that, you know, I'm for in the context of a proper budget, so I have to oppose it in this context.
So it'll be a four, one vote?
Yes. Four, four, one abstention. Four yeses and one abstention.
No.
Judge, are you, you're a no or an abstention on that number three?
I'm a no, and I'm happy to.
Oh, no, no. I think they were just confused.
If I could run the court, I could tell you guys the summary of the vote, but I'm also happy to let my colleagues run the court and the budget director. Okay. So item three is motion to direct O M B and H R T to work with all law enforcement agencies to review and ensure adherence with the county's processes for position-based budgeting and affirm that the law enforcement agencies understand the effects of reclassification and salary adjustments on overall availability of positions based on projected budget use. Motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Briones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposing again in this context of a poorly drafted budget. Motion for Harris County General Fund, move to approve the fiscal year 2026 annual budgets for Harris County Toll Road and all other special, excuse me, and all other grant special funds, which includes a total appropriations budget of $2.769 billion for the Harris County General Fund as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Briones. I will now discuss Commissioner Ellis and then Commissioner Ramsey.
Yep. I think I made my position pretty clear. I vote no on it.
Okay. Commissioner Ramsey.
Yeah, there's been a lot said, particularly about our general fund, and just want to be sure that we were clear with, this is probably one of the most transparent budget processes I've ever had the privilege to be a part of. I've only worked for 50 cities and 20 counties in Texas. And Mr. Ramos, you've done a very good job pulling this together, very difficult job, a lot of competing interests, a lot of, a lot of public meetings, a lot of meetings between the court offices. So just start with very, very good, very good job there. In terms of the dollars on these tax rates that will be generated, there's been a lot of conversation on tax revenue and what it is and what it isn't. The 2026 proposed tax rate will generate $4.1 billion in revenue. Two and a half billion dollars of that will go to the Harris County General Fund. 330 million of that will go to flood control. $1.2 billion is going to go to the hospital district, and 38 million is going to go to the port. I supported flood control. We really defaulted to the no new revenue under general fund, as I understand. That's a part of the transmittal. So that needs to be understood. That was a default. But even when we default to the interesting term that the state legislature's come up with of no new revenue, we're actually going to generate $90 million of tax revenue increase in the general under the no new revenue tax rate. So I think that's kind of an interesting nuance, but those are the, those are the facts. So we'll have $11 million increase in flood control. And the one that I voted against, hospital district, we're going to generate another $140 million in the hospital district this year. That tax rate, that particular entity had $120 million surplus after it got through with last year. So that's kind of an overview of what we've done. And of course, there's the pay raises, law enforcement pay raises. Again, we did prioritize that this year, and that's a good thing. But sometimes we forget to talk about just one minute of what law enforcement in unincorporated Harris County, because that's where the sheriff and the constables have primary responsibility, unincorporated Harris County. And Lord, I appreciate what they do every day out there. But here's the results. The crime rate in unincorporated Harris County is four times less than what it is in the city of Houston. Job well done. So when we talk about these increases and justification and why, that's a little bit of the why. Now, just to be clear on some things, the pick fund is at, once it gets the reimbursements from the feds, which will be 350 million. Now, in 2019, it was 325 million, and it was spent way down since 2019. A lot of things happened, but it got dangerously low. So the fact that there's not a contribution this year, it's not because of the budget necessarily, it's because we've achieved a certain level in there. The cuts that were referenced, the fire marshal is not being cut, because in East Texas, if you have more money this year than you had last year, that ain't a cut. So the fire marshal's not cut. The downtown building security, not cut. Juvenile probation, not cut. The DA in cut. In fact, the DA has $25 million more in that budget. Elections, not cut. J Web was overfunded last year, and so there's dollars there to deal with that. So those are some of the, some of the details of it. And I think it's important that you get the facts on the table in terms of what is being done. And then I'm going to take a point of personal privilege, because it's been referenced many times, how engineers are selected in this county. We follow the Engineering Practice Act. We follow the Engineering Practice Act in selecting vendors and other people and doing work in the county. This elections is qualifications-based selections. And if you're an engineer working in this county, if you're involved in anything that isn't completely and clearly ethical, you could get in trouble with the state board of registration. And I promise you, the thousand engineers that work and live in this, in this county that are involved in this, they are not going to risk their license to do anything. So the smearing of your colleagues, Judge, you just need to stop it. It's not, it's not true. It's not accurate. I got the same email from the Chronicle that you're working with on a story. I've answered every one of those questions related to the process, the details related to how, how selections are made in this county. And if you really want to know more, anybody in this room can go on my website, and you can learn a lot more. What I answered, every question the Chronicle put on the table, and hopefully they'll reference that when they write their article. And I guess that's all I got to say about that.
So I'm going to jump in here. I think we've gone around once. So just to respond, there's something that was referenced in terms of, you know, we actually have $325 million in the rainy day fund if we count the federal funding that's going to arrive. Again, if that's the way we budget, I mean, that's great. Let's count the money that's not here yet and make that part of the budget. I think then there would be, we could save a lot of programs. But obviously, as folks know, there are many federal reimbursements that we have not received, and especially funds from FEMA. So actually, that's not quite the right, the accurate number. The number is $70 million less than what's being referenced. As far as the not cut, so what I would recommend to the press and the public is to look whether the programs are being cut, because, because of inflation, keeping the same programs costs more each year. So what they're doing is they are, sure, they might say that the amount of money is the same, but the programs are being cut. And if we feel so good that having the same amount of money does not cut programs, then how about we go to every department up and down the county and just do the same amount of money, and we do not increase the budget for any department? I would like to motion that and see if that leads all our programs to continue the same. I'm not hearing a second, just like I didn't for the audit. And the last bit I will say is, all of my colleagues voted last year around April to change the way procurement is done because it has been broken for 50 years. So if the program and the procurement was good, why, colleagues, did you all vote for that? The project bidding is problematic, and we will find out once, once this becomes public. But it's not, it's not new. The auditor did an audit. What folks refuse to do for the flood projects, the auditor did an audit last year, which found major, major problems in the way contracts are awarded in Harris County. Commissioner Ellis and then Commissioner Briones.
Judge, I don't want to get into the tit for tat of these issues today, but are our financial advisors here? Are they present?
I'm not sure. Commissioner, you're talking about Masterson?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So I would like to say that at the next court, I think it would be good for all of us to hear a discussion about the factors that lead to a downgrade in our rating. I do know a little bit about that business, because that's how I made my living. And I do know that public spats get most of the issues that we've talked about into the forefront. They can find them anyway, but issues like not being able to complete all the flood bond package, that'll be issue they'll look at. You know, downturn in the economy, unemployment rates, some things beyond our control, some factors that involving Harris Health, as an example, in their package. They look at all of us in this region, and Harris County will get the brunt of it. I know, Daniel, you and I have a slight disagreement on how important bond ratings are, but as a politician, most places where I served as a financial advisor, it matters, and it does impact, no matter how slight that cost of borrowing money may be. Reliance on one-time sources of revenue is always a problem. You know, quick changes, like unexpected things that come up when the city made its decision and then we followed suit, those factors are things that lead to a downgrade. But I think for all of us, it would be good, probably at the next court, in addition to you, Mr. Ramos, to have the financial advisors here, so at least we know. I mean, in this day and age, you could find it anyway. Even if the discussions weren't public, they could find it. Or when they are public, in the few entities where I served as financial advisor, it would pull you to it quicker when it was public. So I think it'd be good for us. It's at least, once this is behind us, we have to do a budget every year. I think I played a role, I voted for, this will be the third one I voted against, and have voted on 25 budgets, and haven't passed one, might I add, much bigger than this one, unanimously. And it certainly didn't have everything I wanted in it, in a much more conservative Texas legislature than I happened to be at the time. But I think all of us will be well advised to be a little cautious on, you know, maybe we ought to one-on-one get in a room and kind of strangle one another, one at a time. Don't strangle two. You have problems in the courtroom around here. But we ought to be advised on the impact on that. Don't take it from me, take from, take it, take advice from the people we pay that give us that advice.
We'll put an item, we'll work with your staff and get an item on.
Thank you.
I have a note here that they're available at 3 for whatever it's worth. Commissioner Briones. Okay, we'll do that next time then. Commissioner Briones.
Thank you. So first of all, I'm proudly voting in favor of this budget, Daniel. To you and your team, thank you for the countless hours you and the over 70 departments and the five court offices have put into this. I thank the hundreds of people who came to the budget town halls, who did these surveys, who have showed up at community meetings, who have showed up at court, who have called our offices, have emailed. And this budget reflects the core priorities, which is public safety, public infrastructure, public health, and disaster readiness. I'm very proud of this historic investment, because it has been years in the making, and we know we were behind for many years. And if it mattered so much, action would have been taken. But we are taking decisive action now to make sure that we're matching what HPD's doing over the next five years, not only because we value and respect your service, but also because it's smart, strategic, and responsible. We know we already had hundreds of vacancies. This spring, HPD had over 1,000. We do not want to hemorrhage officers and make response times go up in the unincorporated areas not on our watch. So I'm proud of that investment. I'm proud that under the leadership of Director Barton, we now are expanding heart countywide. And Sheriff, thank you for supporting this public health program, because we know it helps the people who need services, but it also helps the law enforcement to respond to violent crime. It is a win-win. And by smart budgeting, by taking out consultants and doing it in-house, we're actually able to do the same amount. And so by doing that hard work, we are safer, we're going to be healthier. I was so proud to support the V A R for Harris Health. This is a budget, Harris Health, of $2.9 billion. So you want to talk about a budget that reflects a commitment to healthcare for the most vulnerable? Harris Health is it. And so I'm happy that we are funding not only all the work they are doing, but also their strategic growth priorities that Dr. Porza and his team discussed, again, making Harris County healthier. We can go on and on to the point about disasters. I'm so happy that we were able to preserve all of the resources so that we can be the first responders to pick up debris, to clear roads, to make it safer. Our pick, even if the federal government did not give us any reimbursements after today, we have $197 million in the rainy day fund, 197 million. For context, Beryl and derecho were 70 million. We have 197. So we are more than prepared and ready to respond to disasters. And for further context, Harvey, it was 66.3 million out of the pick and 157 total. Again, we have 197, even if. Again, we have 197, even if we do not receive the additional 168 million, which we have, we are waiting for. So we are in a strong position from a resiliency disaster relief and response. We've invested in healthcare, invested in infrastructure, parks, roads, pothole filling, ditch maintenance, all the things that keep our neighborhoods safer and help us get to work, help us get home to our families, all the educational program we have at our community centers for children, for seniors, that is reflected here, as well as our commitment to helping working families. This budget reflects the $20 minimum wage that Harris County gave to its workers and the 2165 for our contractors, including our janitors, again, helping working people so that one job is enough. This budget also helps, again, set aside an additional 50 million for pay equity for all Harris County employees. So we are prepared to continue making sure that we are helping working families, both within Harris County, team members and across the county, and making sure that we're safer, healthier and have the infrastructure that we need and that we are prepared for the next storm. So I'm thankful to the team because this was countless hours digging into budgets, streamlining, right sizing budgets. Some had year-over-year surpluses, right sizing that, matching expenses to the right revenue source, whether that is food permit fees, fire code fees, JP fees. There was so much work that went into this. And so I hope that the community will keep basing their reaction on actual facts and will separate grant programs, ARPA programs. There's so much information out there, but at the end of the day, you spoke, the hundreds of people, and this budget reflects those priorities. And I just appreciate the collaborative effort because all five of us, our teams were involved for months. The 70-plus departments were involved for months. And again, Director Ramos, to you and your team, this was a Herculean effort. So we were able to make historic, much-needed investments in public safety, and this is one of those all of the above. We were able to right-size and get it done, and we didn't have to go to voters to ask them to raise their taxes even more. So I appreciate this. We will solve it. Leaders show up, leaders do the work, and we got it done together. So thank you again, Director Ramos, and to all of the Harris County team members and to my colleagues who really did lean in and actually do the hard work. So thank you.
So Commissioner, do you support firing the six associate judges that are able to do hearings and address bureaucratic issues while the felony judges take on the harshest cases? For example, murders?
So I'm very well versed on the court system, Judge. We actually invested 2.6 million in emergency response dockets, and that was recommended as a higher and better use of the funds to address the cases that we need to move that would best impact justice as well as the challenges at our jail. So I'm very well versed. And so again, I ask everyone to focus on the actual facts, do the homework, do the hard work, and together we'll keep making Harris County stronger.
So you are in favor of firing the six associate judges, is what I'm hearing?
It's not firing, that's ARPA funded. So again, Judge, please stick to the facts.
They're gonna be fired on Friday.
This is an ARPA program that we were very clear. So please stick to the facts.
Are there any ARPA projects funded in your budget?
Point of order, I'd like to, I'd like to cheer the focus back on the agenda.
See, when he does that, it means I'm saying something important. I'm discussing the budget right now.
For everybody who knows, so ARPA, and I thank the Biden-Harris administration for their one-time investment. We were all very eyes wide open that ARPA was a one-time investment. So we will have to find opportunities to bridge the most efficacious programs, but we all knew, eyes wide in, like grants, it's a one-time investment. And so with that, I look forward to voting in favor of the budget and I'm ready to make the motion.
So, so if, if ARPA is only one-time investments, how come your budget supports ARPA? I thought you said that ARPA should not be supported because that's your reason for firing the six associate judges?
So Judge, we deemed the highest invest investment were the emergency response dockets. We worked closely with Director Mills and the judiciary. And again, everything is the highest and best investment for the return on investment. And I support, most ARPA programs will continue through 2026. Again, there's nuance because this was about a billion-dollar investment. And I thank the Biden-Harris administration, and I hope that the state and federal government will continue to partner and be ways to help solve problems as opposed to some of the challenges that we are continuing to be thrown, given the new administration.
If, if the judiciary is for firing the associate judges, why is it that the judiciary hired with a super majority these six associate judges with over 100 years of experience? And, um, please pardon me here, but the job I appointed you to with a couple of my colleagues here is civil litigation. These are, uh, I might not have finished law school, but this is criminal, very, very different. I, I don't know that you have criminal experience, but, um, correct me if I'm wrong. And so anyway, um, if, if the judiciary does not support this, why is it that they came to plead that we do not cut this? Also, do you realize that the state has now forbidden magistrate judges from being able to sit on cases? That's about 46% of cases they normally see, they won't be able to see. So while there's a huge increase in cases, we're also firing the judges that help hear those cases.
So we have, we have made great plans, and I want to thank Director Tanya Mills and the collaboration we have with the judges and all the key justice stakeholders. I appreciate the planning we're doing for SB nine. I'm aware, and so I would like to move forward with making a motion on item number two.
So do you support cuts to the child support division in the domestic relations office? Because that's included here. Note the interruption. Do you support cuts in inspections of schools so that we have proper fire safety inspections and emergency inspections for school shootings? Because that's in your budget. Do you support that? Yes or no?
Call the vote.
We're happy to vote, and we actually have the fire marshal here. You would like to engage in actual facts. Our wonderful fire marshal, Chief Christensen, is here, but we've made a motion.
Again, didn't want to hear from, from the people. Do you support the reduction in over a million dollars to the district attorney's office? Again, noting the, the interruption here. So you support then not funding these 26 projects that right now are paused?
Motion's been made to call the question that's been seconded.
Okay, just noting again the interruption. So, okay, colleagues, everything I mentioned, again, if they'd like to actually show these programs continuing instead of being reduced. Also, um, do you know that our early childhood program went through years, years of public hearing about, well over 100 people participated, and yet we didn't even want to ask the voters whether they'd like to continue or not, but we are willing to create a $200 million budget hole because we had some town halls. I, I'm just not sure that that's consistent, and I'm still concerned about these projects. If my colleagues believe that these projects are currently funded and going to go forward, like, please tell me if I'm missing something. Are, are these projects right now? Do they have all the funding and will they be completed, these flood control projects? That's a, a simple yes or no question.
Uh, Judge, a call for the question has been made, it's been seconded. Are you going to follow the rules or not?
All right. I, I'm, I think that, um, part of it is the ability to discuss. So normally there's a motion, a second, and then there's discussion. And so I'm discussing for the benefit of the public, and I'm asking a simple question is whether...
Jay, can you give us an interpretation of what needs to call for the question?
Please don't raise your voice, Commissioner. Please don't raise your voice at me. That, that's not appropriate, sir. Explain to me, are these projects funded? Because I heard from you guys say that, that actually we have all this money and they're just paused. So can, can you tell these 27 neighborhoods today that they are for sure going to build these projects? That's a, a simple yes or no question there. So colleagues?
So Judge, I, I know you were here last week when we discussed the flood bond and you, you voted, we talked about it for hours, and you voted in favor.
Yeah, you voted for that.
So we need to move on. So motions on the table.
Note the interruption. I, I voted for...
FY 2026 annual budget for Harris County, Harris County Toll Road and all other grant special funds, which includes a total appropriations budget of 2.769 billion for the Harris County General Fund as presented.
I'm requesting an audit this week. That's what I'm asking for. Last week, I voted on funding the projects we can fund. I'm requesting an audit.
Point of order.
Can you explain to me why you wouldn't like to see an audit?
Second time.
Why don't you want an audit to figure out why we can't afford these projects?
Jay, what is, what is...
Judge, judge, our question's been called, a motion's been made and seconded, so a vote needs to happen on the item.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm also opposed.
And just for clarification, the motion was made by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Breonis.
That was the original motion.
Yes, and it's...
Hundred years ago.
Three to two.
And then we called for the question, yes.
Okay.
There's two other corresponding motions that I would like to make. Move to direct the Office of Management and Budget to finalize pay scales and implement raises for T. Cole licensed peace officers or other state licensed officers in the Fire Marshal's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office, using the 3 million budgeted in the general administration for this purpose and other related funds effective as soon as practicable.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Breonis, second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I'm opposed again, a very irresponsible budget that I'm, I'm embarrassed by.
And the last motion...
Motion carries four to one.
The last motion is move to direct the Office of Management and Budget to return to Commissioners Court with updates on the pay scales and implementation at the November 13th, 2025 Commissioners Court meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Breonis, second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed again. I am not in favor of cutting funding to the IT system that supports our justice system. When it was not supported, our 100 folks were released from the jail. I think that's a public safety issue. If my colleagues would like to answer yes or no, whether, um, they support an audit to these projects and whether they're okay with firing six associate judges, whether or not they're okay with not properly funding the maintenance of that program, whether or not they're okay with not properly inspecting schools, whether or not they're okay with cutting mental health services in our youth, um, justice facilities and cutting funding for the district attorney's office. I'd, I'd love to hear them answer that. So colleagues, um, okay, I, I will take your, um, your lack of answer as a, as yes, you're okay with it, but you would not like to admit it. All right, so that, that carries four to one. I'm against. And now we just have executive session, right?
No, Judge, uh, we have item three, the public hearing related to Harris Health.
All right, so item three, public hearing related to publ- uh, public hearing related to Harris Health. So let me scroll down here. All right. I now open the public hearing, uh, to consider approval of the fiscal year 2026 budget for the Harris County Hospital District DVA Harris Health System. Is there someone who'd like to speak for or against this item? Thank you. Is there any discussion? I now close this public hearing. Is there a motion on the item? A motion would be to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget for the Harris County Hospital District DVA Harris Health as approved by the Harris Health Board and as presented.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Breonis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Uh, I'm in favor, motion carries four to one. So now we will break for executive session to address the managed time council item. Thank you. And, and, uh, I have a commitment in Washington DC, so I'll let, I'll let you finish this.
At the same time.
Yes, I'm, I'm getting there, sir. I mean, my seventh year in office, but as I said, if you guys would like the court, run the court, welcome to. All right, it's 3:17 and we're going to executive session.
Thank you.